Good morning. Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Madam Speaker, we have quorum.
I call this meeting of City Council for July 17th, 2025 to order and acknowledge that we're on Treaty I territory, the home and traditional lands of the Anishnaabe, Inunu, and Dakota Peoples, and in the national homeland of the Red River Métis. Our drinking water comes from Sho Lake 40 First Nation in Treaty III territory. We'll now have the opening prayer. Please rise if you're able, and we'll hear from Councillor Brian Mays.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Very fortunate that it's my turn on the rotation to do the prayer because for the past two weeks I've had with me a visiting student from Washington DC, Micah Paul, high school student going into grade 12 who's been following me around, culminating in this meeting today. I got to know Micah's dad when we worked on seven different US congressional campaigns for the Democratic Party. So I asked Micah to advise on a prayer, so we came up with Bruce Springsteen, though not a song. Don't want to get into Councillor Shire's territory. So Bruce Springsteen's quote when, after Harry Chapin passed away and Bruce Springsteen spoke at the memorial, two comments, and he said, "My generation, we were the generation that was going to change the world. Somehow we were going to make it a little less lonely, a little less hungry, a little more just place." But I think Harry instinctively knew that it was going to take a lot more than just love to survive. It was going to take a strong sense of purpose, of duty, and a good clear eye on the dirty ways of the world. And I think over the past two weeks with the help of the Mayor's Office, Councillor Rollins, and our colleagues, we've shown our young visitor here hopefully a sense of duty and a sense of purpose, and to have a good clear eye on the dirty ways of the world, which is a lot of what we do here. So thank you, Madam Speaker. That's my prayer for today.
Thank you, Councillor Mays. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Madam Speaker, Councillor Sharma. His worship, Mayor Gillingham. Councillors Allard, Brawadi, Chambers, Dobson, Duncan, Edie, Gilroy, Luks, Mays, Orliko, Rollins, Santos, and Wyatt.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to introduce today's pages. Please join me in welcoming Vladislav Taniszek from St. James Collegiate, who resides in the St. James Ward, and Hemaney Butt from Dakota Collegiate, who resides in the St. Vitale Ward. Thank you for serving council today. We'll now move into morning announcements. Mr. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and through you, a good morning to everyone today. I want to begin today by acknowledging our neighbors from across the province who are having to evacuate their communities due to wildfires. It seems that this is a never-ending summer of wildfire evacuations, and here we are on at least our second cycle of evacuations. Many have had to leave their homes with not much more than the clothes on their backs, really unsure of what they're going to return home to. Here at the city, we continue to support the province of Manitoba and the Canadian Red Cross however we can in assisting with the wildfire evacuations. I want to thank all the volunteers and everyone who has been involved in this evacuation. A special shout out to the Canadian Armed Forces, specifically the Canadian Air Force, whose members have flown really into the hundreds of flights now to move people out of really difficult situations out of northern Manitoba and move them to safety in the south. And so a huge thanks to the men and women of the Canadian Armed Forces, both the pilots and the support teams involved in that. Also thank you to our Winnipeg Police Service, our Winnipeg Fire Paramedic Service, Transit, Public Works, community services, and other city staff who have been involved in various ways with assisting the evacuees. Since our last council meeting, we've officially opened Portage, Jermaine, pedestrians are now able to cross Portage, Jermaine at the intersection for the first time since 1979, and I've been receiving very, very positive feedback. Again, I want to thank our city teams, the folks from Dillon Consulting, MD Steel, and everyone else involved in the construction of that intersection. It looks fantastic, and again, a shout out to everyone who was involved in any way. This is just one piece of the larger effort to make our downtown more connected, more accessible, and more welcoming for everybody. Currently, work is underway to reimagine Graham Avenue as a vibrant pedestrian-friendly destination in our downtown. I look forward to officially opening the space, and Winnipegers enjoying events there on Graham Avenue, like the Street Festival that will be happening as part of the Canadian Elite Basketball League Summer Championship Weekend, Canada's biggest annual basketball event that'll happen in August. And congratulations today to the Winnipeg Folk Festival on a record-breaking 79,000 people in attendance in this year's anniversary festival. It's the 50th anniversary this year of the Winnipeg Folk Festival, and it was a special highlight for me to be able to present the key to the city to the legendary Bruce Colburn on Saturday. Bruce Colburn, of course, is one of the Canada's most influential artists, one of the most decorated artists with a career spanning over five decades. Quite remarkably, Bruce Colburn was there at the very first Winnipeg Folk Festival in 1974. He's been back many times since, and so it was an honor to present him with the key to the city during the festival's 50th anniversary. As the summer festival season continues, last night the Winnipeg Fringe Festival kicked off its annual festival and lineup of shows. It's on until January, pardon me, not January, it's not on that long. It's on until July the 27th, and there will be 145 shows happening all around the city with most venues being right here around the Exchange District, and I look forward to going and attending some of them next week. Of course, Folkarama is also coming up from August the 3rd to the 16th, the largest and longest-running multicultural festival of its kind in the world. I want to repeat that. Folkarama is the largest, longest-running multicultural festival of its kind in the world. It's quite remarkable. We have it right here in our own city. And I know that all of us look forward to world-class entertainment, warm hospitality, and of course, the delicious food, so we look forward to seeing you there. And today is Mr. Sherwood Armbruster's last meeting as our interim CEO. And so we want to thank Sherwood for his really outstanding work as our interim CEO for the last year. And I think, you know, the CEO, when it's going well, they're kind of like a referee in a hockey game. You don't notice them. And so quietly, consistently, Sherwood and his team went about and have gone about their business of providing leadership to our almost 10,000 employees, ensuring that the city services that residents rely upon are delivered, and he's made progress on our performance management review recommendations, and so has done a lot of good work. We look forward to Mr. Joe Dunford coming in as our new CEO beginning in August. But today, on behalf of all of us, Madam Speaker, I want to thank Sherwood for his good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for those exciting announcements. Next is Councillor Gilroy, followed by Councillor Mays.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise today to talk to my council colleagues and of course, all those that are listening. That Winnipeg Safe Cities Initiative and Winnipeg Committee for Safety are doing a survey. And so we're really wanted to collect data on people's ideas of safety, whether that is when you travel or when you're in your own community, what type of safety you feel, or maybe for some people, I've heard from some people, "I feel safe." So they want to be able to respond to that. There's a place where you can put a few more details on here. I know that people, a lot that are here today are really interested in cycling, so maybe that's a focus that they want to take on in the survey. But this data, we're hoping to really collect throughout all the wards in the city. We're really wanting to connect with residents from your ward, and I'm actually hoping that when this data is collected, we'll be able to share with you some of what they're hearing, and you'll be able to use this data as ever, however you feel you needed to use it for. It's really important that we do get people's thoughts, and I do want to collect this data throughout the whole city. For those of you that might get questions on if we're going out into community, we are going out into community where people may not have access to the internet, where maybe some people are unhoused, and we feel that they should be able to respond to the survey as well. So we're trying to collect data across all different wards and to different people that may have access to the internet, which would be this here. You can scan, the QR code scan, and fill it out, or for those that might need a little bit more outreach and maybe the pen and paper to help them with the survey. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Councillor Gilroy. Next is Councillor Mays, followed by Councillor Edie.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. As councils rep the past eight years on the Winnipeg Art Gallery Board, I just wanted to take a few moments to praise Stephen Boris, who has just announced that he's stepping down as Director of the Art Gallery and CEO after about a 17-year run. I've been lucky enough to, I'm now the longest-serving board member actually, and Chair of the Works of Art Committee, and I just want to thank Stephen for all the hours he's put in. And certainly, I can say three things. Never look down on people like me who would say, "What do you mean by Fauvism in that sentence?" And he would answer, an expert in art matters, has a PhD in art matters. Also, I would say I'm 99% sure we would never have gotten the Camayuk expansion to the art gallery without Stephen's efforts, and I'm 100% sure I wouldn't have supported it because I voted against it the first time I was here, and he called me up and said, "Come on over. We'll have a talk." You know, "I'm not sure you're getting all this." And I became frankly, a very zealous supporter of that expansion and ended up on the board and have had a wonderful run doing that. So I wanted to thank Stephen, who is going off on some other adventures now, but we do have a seat on the Art Gallery Board, and it's certainly been a pleasure to be there over the past eight years and to work with Mr. Boris. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Mays. Very thoughtful remarks on Stephen Boris's work with the Art Gallery. Thank you. Councillor Edie, followed by Councillor Wyatt.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have two announcements today. I forgot to make an announcement about Backman-Turner Overdrive honorary naming of the Disraeli Freeway, given the circumstances that happened only a couple of weeks later before and council. So I would like to announce to Winnipeg and anybody listening in that Mr. Randy Backman and Mr. Fred Turner of Backman-Turner Overdrive were so pleased on April 18th, 2025, we held an event at the Saradoc Ukrainian Museum at Disraeli in Maine where we unveiled the honorary street signing. And it was magical because there was many Winnipeg musicians out, as well as other Winnipeggers who were so pleased to see us as a city do so. And Madam Speaker, you and our committee moved the motion, and it happened in Councillor Santos's board. And we wanted to appreciate what Backman-Turner Overdrive did to help put Winnipeg on the map. I mean, there's the Guess Who, and there's Neil Young and others. However, BTO, Randy Backman, has really, in Winnipeg, has only been acknowledged once at West Caldonan Collegiate with a performing space at West Caldonan Collegiate. And recognizing Fred Turner, they were so happy and proud to receive this, and it went worldwide. And congratulations went out to Randy Backman and Fred Turner, and what a pleasant man Mr. Fred Turner is. He's retired from being a musician, but he's well-known for his excellent singing with BTO and bass playing. And other than that, if you're driving down the freeway from Maine all the way up to Disraeli Bridge, you will see that we've honored Backman-Turner Overdrive, and it's been great to see that we, as a city, have honored many other musicians that really make, and if you think about it, it's Winter City, and if you listen to Randy Backman's song about the day, he talks about what do you do in the winter in Winnipeg? Wow, you put together a whole bunch of really good bands, and you create a lot of great musicians and songwriters.
Councillor Edie, that was exciting. You had a second announcement as well?
Yes. The second announcement. Madam Speaker, it was my honor to attend the 50th anniversary of Grant's Old Mill, the establishment of a building in the mill over at Sturgeon and Portage Avenue. And it was a great day. It started at 9:00 AM. They served a breakfast, and they were acknowledging, well, they're having to build a new building as that building is not safe really anymore. But it is a place where Cuthbert Grant had established a mill. Cuthbert Grant, as people may know, and it's connected to my warden, so this is why I'm announcing it. Cuthbert Grant and the, from the Métis perspective, the Battle of Seven Oaks, as they called it, the victory at Seven Oaks, where really the Métis, Red River Métis Nation started to establish their rights to doing and working the lands of Manitoba and beyond. And so it was a great day, a lot of great musicians, a lot of jigging, a lot of fiddling. There was quite a good attendance, and I was thankful that I got to speak on behalf of the city, as the mayor had an important doctor's appointment and wasn't able to attend. And so anyway, great event, and hopefully they can find the money to continue to establish a new building for Grant's Old Mill, which really goes to the basics of the Métis Nation.
Thank you, Councillor Edie. Our final announcement by Councillor Wyatt.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just before I make my announcement, I just want to welcome all these folks here to the chamber. This is your chamber. This is your city hall. Thank you for being here. Many of you probably a first time. I want to also announce, Madam Speaker, on the August long weekend, that the Beulah Recreation Park is facilitating and hosting the Canadian Native Fast Pitch Championships. The name of it is the official title. Just for the information of this council, that this tournament was bid on by Beulah Recreation Park against the main rival, which was actually St. Albert, Saskatchewan. 6,000 rooms have been booked for this August long weekend in the city of Winnipeg. A direct spinoff, by the way, Madam Speaker, to the accommodation taxes, city of Winnipeg. Beulah has consistently done this and been proactive, bringing in business, not to mention all the spinoffs that business does. And I volunteered before when they came about a decade or so ago to our city, and I would encourage anybody on this council, I know they'd be very welcome to volunteer. We're looking for volunteers. So it's a wonderful tournament. It's really amazing to attend, and that's on the August long weekend. I'll be volunteering, and I would encourage anybody on this council, and the mayor, maybe even open the opening game with a opening ball, something to that effect, we could get an invitation out. So I just wanted to mention that, Madam Speaker. It's an exciting thing for our city, and to have representatives from across the country of First Nations here in attendance, and it's a lot of fun just to watch and to listen to the play-by-play. Thanks, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Councillor Wyatt. Councillor Luks, will you move at the minutes of the meeting held June 26, 2025? Be taken as read and confirmed.
So moved.
All in favor? Contrary, carried. We'll move into delegations. Before that, indeed, a very warm welcome to residents that are in the gallery with us today. And on that note, I would like to remind everyone there are no demonstrations permitted in the council chamber, and that would be in the form of cheering and clapping, or otherwise any other demonstration. So let's please keep our dialogue respectful. We have a long agenda before us here today. The first delegation is David Grant, who's appearing remotely in opposition to Item 3 and 6 of the Report of the Executive Policy Committee, Item 4 of the Report of the Standing Policy Committee on Water and Waste in the Environment, and Item 2 of the Report of the Standing Policy Committee on Community Services. Welcome, David.
Thank you, Chair Sharma. Good morning. On your last day of meetings until the fall, the fall of what one might ask. I hope you're all able to connect with your constituents over the next seven weeks or so. I also want to thank our interim CEO for a job well done. When I had 10 minutes to speak, I seldom use them all, so I'm hoping to not need more than the five I have today. EPC 3, even since even the folks in charge do not know all the bylaws that they can enforce, I suggest that you must apply more effort to education and warning tickets before you actually levy fines. Long grass is an obvious offense. Having guests park in your driveway is a less well-known crime. It is clear that you are moving away from the famous complaints-based model to one of targeted enforcement. That change will probably be very profitable. Will this enforcement make our lives better? On EPC 6, profiting from photo enforcement. This renewal is a textbook case of violating every applicable rule. There is no sign of accountability for those administering the program or for the company doing the work. No urgent need was explained for not using competitive bidding. The program has been operated unlawfully. It's been raised here before. We all know that the most profitable PE takes place outside the zones laid out clearly in the legislation. We know that there are diagrams defining where signage must be, and that these are routinely ignored. We know that the reporting required in the law has not been done, and the program's been in for decades. On topic 4, water topic 4, CSO mitigation, combined sewer overflows. I developed state-of-the-art tools to reduce the VOD, biological oxygen demand, and other pollution from Windsor's combined sewers when I was a young engineer. I think most of you heard me point this out. I published this work more than 50 years ago, and yet here we are with all those tools not in use, as far as I can see, to protect our river. I reminded the Water Committee of this recently, but my comments fell on the proverbial deaf ears. Will all of council do the same? I know my friend Jason would not have ignored this issue, and I dearly miss him. Some of you say I am being vexatious rather than considering this to be information that can help you question staff and make better decisions. Normally, the cost of an audit is borne by the organization being audited. If this spending is approved in the services item today, it will open the way for other city-funded organizations to get funding for functional and financial audits. Using this funding pathway will assure the public that public funds are being properly used. No one wants to waste money on audits, but if a case has been made that there are real anomalies involved, we just need to decide on the use of the city's in-house audit team versus hiring outside accounts. I suggest that we need council to issue a policy to assist with these decisions on who pays for audits. For many years, folks have decried the fact that city and provincial audit functions cannot be more widely applied. The corollary of that, knowing that no audit function will ever be applied to most semi-government organizations, this may lead to more outrageous misbehavior. If somebody is in power and they know no one will ever check, they might be tempted to misbehave. Spending city dollars to audit the arena in Fort Richmond may be justified, and the case has certainly been made here, as may be using city funds to audit FURNA, the local Fort Richmond Residents' Association. The indicators for a FURNA audit are strong. When new leadership took control of this organization, those in control of its finances refused to fill out the customary bank account officer transfer forms. Instead, long after they held no elected position in the association, they took the funds and closed the credit union account. This made it impossible for the legitimate officers of the association to review its financial history. If the city decides to use capital acquisition funds today to pay for an audit of the arena operation, then it should, in my opinion, also fund audits of its analogous organizations, such as FURNA, where indicated. I'm asking that this funding request be amended to include an audit of FURNA also. And hopefully I've taken up less than five minutes of your time, and thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, David. Any questions for our delegation? Seeing none today. David, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Next delegation is Ray Sator. You're here with us in person. He's the chapter commander of the Knights of Rizal, to be heard in support of Item 18 of the Report of the Executive Policy Committee dated July 8, 2025. It's regarding the Land Dedication Reserve Fund, Knights of Rizal Winnipeg Chapter, the Historical Marker. Welcome.
Good morning, Madam Speaker. Good morning, everyone. My name is Ray Anthony Store. I am the commander of the Knights of Rizal in Winnipeg. Your worship, Mayor Scott Gillingham. Good morning. I hope more people now know how we address you as a mayor. The game show Joe Parti has definitely put Winnipeg in the map. I am here today in support of Item 18 of the Report of Executive Policy Committee dated July 8, 2025, Land Dedication Reserve Fund, Knights of Rizal Winnipeg Chapter, Historical Marker. On June 19, 2025, in commemoration of Dr. Rizal's 164th birthday, the Filipina Consulate and the National Historical Commission of the Philippines transferred to the Knights of Rizal in the city of Winnipeg. The 80 kilos, 48 by 28 by 2 inches, was the Rizal Historical Marker. How do we get the presentation?
Excuse me?
How do we get the presentation? I had submitted a presentation.
The council is aware. It'll be circulated. Thank you.
All right. So I submitted a presentation and sharing photos of the signing of a transfer certificate and the marker that took place on June 19th for your reference. So the Rizal Historical Markers, along with the Rizal's monuments, serve as focal point for community gatherings and celebrations, reminding Filipinos to their heritage and inspiring them to uphold Rizal's values, in promoting patriotism, education, sense of duty, sense of purpose, and desire to contribute to something larger than ourselves. In the Philippines, there's a term we call Bayanihan spirit. The concept of Bayanihan, or community cooperation, has been seen in action in achieving this goal of getting the Rizal marker to find its permanent home here in Winnipeg. With that, in behalf of the Filipino community, the Knights of Rizal, and fellow Winnipeggers, I extend our sincerest gratitude to all of you. Councillor David Sharma, Councillor Vivian Santos, Councillor Rose Edie, and the members of the Lord Swakirt West Caldonan Committee, thank you very much for all your attention and support to this matter. To all our hard-working members of the Executive Policy Committee and council, thank you very much. We really appreciate your outstanding performance in providing the community a venue to foster and promote our culture and heritage. Thank you, and may you continue to provide support to what is important to the community and Winnipeggers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sir Ray. And I'm just confirming, your full application is attached to the agenda today. Council does have that. Any questions? I think your application speaks for itself. Thank you for your presentation. Have a good day. Next, appearing remotely is Jamie Hilland, Active Transportation Consultant with Urban Systems, to be heard in support of Item 7 of the Report of the Standing Policy Committee on Property Development, dated July 4, 2025. It's regarding the proposed lease agreement between Winnipeg School Division Number 1 and the city of Winnipeg at 2286 Inster Boulevard, commonly known as Fair Grove Park Bay. Jamie, welcome. Can you unmute, Jamie? Okay, Mr. Clerk, we seem to have some technical difficulties. I think it's on Jamie's end. Can you hear me, Jamie? Thumbs up if you can hear me. We cannot hear you, though. We can come back to you unless you can see if you can get it going on your end. Now, we can try to come back to you momentarily. You want to communicate with the clerk? Thank you. Our next delegation is Margaret Friesen, Director of the Environmental Health Association of Manitoba, to be heard in opposition to Item 5 of the Report of the Standing Policy Committee on Water and Waste in the Environment, dated June 27. It's regarding the OCTO program for the advanced metering system. Welcome, Margaret.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
And Margaret, questions, or pardon me, your presentation can be brought through the chair. And I'd like to remind all delegations, when you're addressing council, just through the chair.
All right. Thank you. May I say Mayor Gillingham and City of Winnipeg, councillors? Good morning. My name is Margaret Friesen. I'm a volunteer representing members of the Environmental Health Association of Manitoba. We are a not-for-profit, non-governmental, nonpartisan organization. Goals are to promote education and information on environmental sensitivities. We are often referred to as the canaries in the coal mine, that is, early indicators of conditions that can become harmful to others. I have a Master of Science degree and more than 30 years' experience in primary research with the federal government. I have a master of science degree and more than thirty years' experience in primary research with the federal government. We ask that you do not support item five, recommendation one, that the city not implement an opt-out program for the advanced metering system in order to maximize the full benefits of the advanced, of the AMI technology. This is also known as the Smart Water Meter Project. Instead, we ask that you amend the recommendation to keep the opt-out program and include flexibility in the process for ongoing reporting. I am not here to oppose the AMI program. I'm here to advocate for those with environmental sensitivities for which the Canadian Human Rights Commission has a policy for accommodation, as well as for those who want an opt-out program for various reasons, including health concerns. After the February fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Water, Waste and Environment Committee, it seems certain there would be an opt-out program. I quote from the staff report, "Customers not participating in the AMI system would pay a manual meter reading fee. The fee would recover costs associated with continuing manual meter readings and will be added to the water and sewer bill." Now, the staff is recommending that the city not implement the opt-out program. What happened? What's changed? Nothing, as far as I can tell. Some Winnipeggers still want an opt-out program. People who are disabled by wireless signals are still needing accommodation. According to the June twenty-seventh staff report, the estimated number of homes that will opt out is two hundred and twenty to four hundred and forty. Is that really an onerous number? It may seem like an inconvenience to have an opt-out program or accommodate those with disabilities, but this is not a trivial issue. The health risks to exposure to smart meters are real. Smart meters emit strong, sharp bursts of energy, radio frequency radiation when broadcasting, when sending a signal. These peaks are averaged out and therefore meet Health Canada's guidelines. But our bodies react to peaks. RF radiation is classified as a possible 2B carcinogen, human carcinogens. In April twenty twenty-five, a paper co-authored by a Health Canada scientist found high certainty of evidence linking exposure of radio frequency exposure in cancer and animals. Now, this from Paul Haru, who wrote a letter to the EPC on July third. He's a professor at McGill University Faculty of Medicine. I quote, "Health Canada's safety limits are inadequate to protect people's health in general, but more specifically, a small group among Winnipeg residents who are designated as electrohypersensitive. I have been in contact with many such people over the years and can certify that they are genuine victims of blind technological expansion. In order to make their lives possible, they need to be protected from even small amounts of radiation, and I invite you to read Frank Legg's letter that he sent to you yesterday. The public service has said that they would work with individual customers to try to use different options to address the concerns. What if different options don't work in some situations? These different options need to be evaluated at the beginning of this process to see if they meet people's needs, to avoid costly adjustments to the procurement process and installation costs. Isn't it better to deal with this issue upfront? Winnipeggers need to be consulted and not disregarded. The technology is being brought into our homes. The public needs to be consulted before commitments are made to clearly identify accommodation needs so that they can be incorporated in the request for proposal. The opt-out program will evolve as the AMI project evolves. We ask that you amend the recommendation to keep the opt-out program and include flexibility in the process for ongoing reporting to the Water, Waste and Environment Committee."
Thank you, Margaret, for your presentation. I'll ask you to remain on the bench, and we'll hear from another delegation on the same topic, and then we'll ask questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
So where?
Just on the bench, please. I'd like to call forward Barry Malonechuk, also in opposition to the same item. Then we'll have an opportunity for questions. Following that, we'll go back to the remote presentation. I believe the technical difficulties have been resolved. Mr. Clerk, thank you. Welcome.
Good morning, Madam Speaker, Mr. Mayor, councilors. My name is Barry Malonechuk. I'm a retired professional engineer, ex of Manitoba Hydro for over forty years, and I have over sixty years of wireless experience, and I'm really not that old. I do have extensive experience with radio frequency electromagnetic field safety issues. I guided Manitoba Hydro's RF EMF safety program, and I practice personal safety with my high-power, and I mean really high-power, amateur radio equipment from fifty megahertz to two hundred and forty-one gigahertz. And I'll apologize for my appearance this morning. I had a little bit of a mishap late yesterday afternoon. You should see the other guy. From the DIAMETER report that the city contracted for, the Health Canada website states there are no health risks from exposure to radio frequency EMF from smart meters. Now, in reality, Health Canada has not done any long-term and low-intensity exposure studies to determine the safety of radio frequency EMF. All of their, their studies were done on heating effects. Previously, Health Canada also said that smoking, vaping, asbestos, UFI, et cetera, were considered safe. So why should we believe them now? My experience has shown that a small part of the population do have hypersensitivity to radio frequency EMF radiation. I know there's a lot of people that don't believe it, but I do. The city of Winnipeg must accommodate people with this condition by providing a wholesome opt-out program. The city of Winnipeg should add some options in the request for proposal that it would like to see for a, for householders who want to opt out. You know, ask your, your proposers to give you some options, and then you could consider them. And as Margaret had said, you know, it may not be that big an impact to the project, but until you get a response, you don't know, really. Also, from the DIAMETER report, they, they said that unlicensed frequency devices have a power limitation of one watt per transmission, while licensed transmitters can provide up to two watts of radio power. In addition, depending on the technology, AMA, AMI radio transmissions can be less frequent, you know, on a scheduled basis. Now, so one watt and two watts of transmitter power, this is not low-power transmissions. I think in some of the previous correspondence, it said that this is less than cell phones and things like that. No, it's not. Cell phones are like a quarter of a watt at best, and they automatically ramp the power down depending on the signal strength coming in. And Wi-Fi's are also similarly much lower. So safety cannot be assured if we're talking about one or two watt transmitters, even if they're only on for a brief period. As a minimum, you know, locations that are, that have these meters and their sensitive occupants should be configured for the lowest number of, lowest number of transmissions with a minimum of transmitter power, whether that's done automatically by the equipment or that's part of the manual setup. Also, from the DIAMETER report, the, they said to limit the amount of infrastructure required in a fixed network while maintaining daily read access, DIAMETER recommends that fixed network radio transmitters be located outside the premises. And it said that the financial model will assume that the radio transmitters will be located outside of the premises. Is that still the case? You know, that's a detail. Of course, we don't have any details because we don't have any RFPs yet.
One minute left on the clock, Mary.
So my final comments, I support the recommendation from the Water, Waste and Environment Standing Committee with the following modifications: There should be no cost to the consumer. The option should be available when moving to a new residence, and a medical letter should be signed by any medical doctor registered in Canada. The city should add the options in the RFP that it would like to offer householders who want to opt out. And, councilors, I urge you to vote in opposition to the recommendations as they appear in the council agenda. And also, you should direct the public service to come back with details as to how they'll work with individual customers in different, in using different options to address health and other concerns. This was stated by a member of the public service at the Water, Waste and Environment Committee meeting on June the twenty-seventh. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. We'll now take questions for either delegation. Margaret, if you could please come back. Counselor May is followed by Counselor Edie.
Thank you for the presentation. Just for clarity, and you may not be aware, but we have in front of us now an amending motion made by Counselor Edie, seconded, seconded by me, to reinstate what was passed, more or less reinstate what was passed at Water and Waste Committee. So just for clarity, you're not saying undo this whole hundred and twenty million dollar program? We have voted for that to roll this out. You're just saying have some sort of opt-out wording, which is what council directed back in twenty twenty-four, I believe.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Edie?
Uh, yes. Madam Speaker, I just wanted to point out that the various means of working with those who can't prove that, or don't have a medical doctor acknowledging their disabling factors related to these kinds of radio waves, Madam Speaker. But in that report, they actually detail the various means that could be used to protect, well, I guess, keep the waves from affecting people in the house. Are you aware of that?
Thank you for the question and the response.
Yes. You may say there are details, they are a possibility. They say, yes, this vendor offers that option, that vendor offers another option. Really, we don't have anything solid, and that needs to happen, and it's, people need to be consulted beforehand so that when the request for proposal goes in, that those considerations are included in that. So just saying, yes, we can put the wire outside, or we, sometimes they say it'll emit three times a day, sometimes it's once a week. We don't know, and those are really important things for us to know. And, and other safer options, like what are the safer options? The time to ask is when the request for proposal goes in. So let's do the best we can to put that together. These are, these are big companies. They can, they can make anything they want in terms of the meters. So if we want a safer meter, you know, it can go in the request for proposal.
Thank you. Any further questions? Counselor Wyatt?
Uh, just clarification, what association are you with?
Environmental Health, Environmental Health Association of Manitoba.
So I was here when they, we had the great debate about smoking and indoor smoking and all that stuff happening at the time, or, or, and then the patio debate. And what I noticed, the big, the major change from that one, was when the doctors weigh in and officially. Now, your, your issue kind of reminds me a little bit of the fluoride debate, you know, about water and fluoride. Is, have you been able to secure, based on scientific research, the, the support of the doctors and their various associations? Because I think that would be the turning point in your attempts to have these issues addressed. Has, has there been any confirmation in terms of science and that with regards to their approval of your proposal?
In terms of approval, what?
In terms of approval of, of what you're requesting.
Well, yes, I just quoted Dr. Paul Haru, who is a researcher at McGill University.
I hear that, but I'm talking about their associations.
Associations.
Have they officially taken a position on your matter?
Well, there are associations in the States and certainly in Europe. So there's an association called Europam, which I don't remember what it's called, but they are definitely researching this, and they recommend that people minimize their exposure to this. We also have Women's College Hospital, Environmental Health Clinic. Dr. Rena Bure, she would be glad to, to discuss this with the staff or anyone here, what is needed for accommodation of, of people, and that, and the Women's College Hospital in Toronto.
Thank you.
And that's where I went. So I had to go out of province for the expertise and for support for accommodating me in the workplace. I was accommodated for electrosensitivity in the federal government for six years.
And I, and with, you know, I'm, I'm, what I'm trying to do is give you a helpful suggestion, I give you with the greatest respect. Uh, thank you for coming here today, but, uh, we're not in Europe, we're not in the United States. And we, and the doctors, my experience, are you aware that when the doctors weigh in, if they develop a position and they support it based on scientific evidence, and they weigh in officially through their appropriate association or associations, that that can make a great difference to your request and cause? Are you aware of that?
Thank you. Counselor Wyatt, the response?
Thank you. Yes. So I, I spoke with the public health doctors here a number of years ago. I was very concerned when the World Health Organization classified this as, IARC, International Agency for Research on Cancer, classified this as a possible carcinogen. What the doctors told me here in Manitoba, they don't have time to read the literature. They don't have time to, they don't have the expertise in this, so they have to trust Health Canada. And what I'm here to tell you today is you cannot trust Health Canada. I was very happy with my job. I'm not, I'm, I'm, you know, I was a federal employee. This gives me no joy to say this, but they're lagging behind in the science. And we are where we are with smoking. In the mid nineteen seventies, I was sitting in, in malls, getting people to sign petitions to Health Canada. That turned around. I'm amazed at how it's turned around. And the same thing is happening here. We're just at the beginning, the cutting edge. We need to protect the vulnerable.
Thank you, Margaret. Any further questions? Wish you a good day. Thank you. We'll go back to our remote delegation. I believe the technical difficulties have been resolved. Jamie Hilland. He's appearing in support of item seven of the Report of the Standing Policy Committee on Property and Development, dated July fourth, twenty twenty-five. It's regarding a proposed lease license agreement between Winnipeg School Division and the city of Winnipeg with respect to Fair Grove Park. Welcome, Jamie.
Good morning, council. Mr. Mayor, can you hear me okay now?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Okay. Apologies for the early technical voice. Click the run button. Uh, yes, thank you for the introduction, Counselor Sharma. Uh, my name is Jamie Hill, and I'm an active transportation consultant with Urban Systems here in Winnipeg. I've worked on a number of projects here in Winnipeg and across the country. I'm here today to speak in favor of the proposed license agreement between, at two-two-eight-six, Inster Boulevard. It's Stanley, a full Stanley Noel School. We've been working with them for about the past five years to do a number of fundraising initiatives and looking at building a bike trail for the community in Fair Grove Park, the Common Terminology. Uh, I also want to give special recognition to teacher Luke Barr and principal Andrea Powell at the school, who have been, done a tremendous job in, you know, writing a lot of grant applications that we've been assisting with over the number of years, and they've raised a significant funding, amount of funding, as well as a recognition of Counselor Santos for her contribution to this project. This lease agreement is one that we have done previously in Counselor Santos's word as well, at Arthur Rewrite School. So a project we did a number of years ago.
It was my word, Jamie. Counselor Sharma's word. I remember working on that project.
Sorry, I apologize. Yes, we worked on the project together. I apologize, Counselor Sharma. That, which is proven, as Counselor Sharma can tell you, to be quite a tremendous community asset. Every time that I've gone there, like site visits, or ride with the Flaming Cheetas, kids of my club that we ran for a number of years, uh, it's been a very popular community entity. And so what, we are anticipating a similar type of uptake from the community at Stanley Noel School. Uh, it will be smaller in scale, obviously, you know, as we all know, construction costs have risen, but we still feel that this will be a tremendous asset to the community. Maintenance and all those details have already been worked out, both with city staff and the school district staff. We've had tremendous support from the school division as well, especially Mr. Henderson, the superintendent and division. And so the parties have worked really hard to come to this point, and so we are hoping that council will vote in favor of this lease agreement and allow the school to proceed with this project. They have come up with all of the funds on their own and are willing to maintain this new asset for the school going forward. Uh, and again, it will benefit the broader community. We envision this not only being a benefit to the school itself, but will create a community asset that all community members in the surrounding neighborhood will be able to access at all times. So just speaking in favor of it, it's been a really wonderful opportunity to work with the school community and the students of the school and the administration and the staff to bring this, this forward and do a lot of fundraising. Uh, they've worked really, really hard on it, and so we hope that you folks will recognize those efforts and best support this, this license agreement. That's it. Thank you. If you have any questions.
Thank you, Jamie. Any questions for our presenter? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Jamie. We wish you a good day.
You too.
Our next delegation is Wendy Van Loon, I believe, here in person. Yes, in opposition to item four- Yes, in opposition to item four, the report of the Standing Policy Committee on Public Works dated July 3rd, 2025. It's regarding the Bike Lane Pilot Project, which is formerly the Speed Limit Reduction on Wellington Crescent. Welcome.
Good morning to Chair and members of council. At this point, you probably know who I am. My name is Wendy Van Loon, and I'm wife of Rob Jenner, the cyclist killed on Wellington Crescent last summer on June 6th, 2024. Thank you for your support in the gallery, especially to the children, our future for Winnipeg. I would like to thank the mayor and many counselors who have offered their condolences, particularly to Counselor Shari Rollins for addressing my call to action in July 2024. Counselor Rollins has been instrumental in advancing our efforts to make Wellington a safer street for everyone. I also want to thank Counselor Sherry, Janice Luks, sorry, for her support of the 30-kilometer speed limit and for voicing her support. I'm here to express my opposition to the 220-day delay of the Wellington Crescent Bike Lane Project. I know that some of you experienced a tragic loss, death, and you understand how it can change your life forever. For those that have not faced such a tragedy, my heartfelt hope is you never will. I have experienced it and live with that reality every day. In July 2024, with my permission, the biking community installed a ghost bike at the site of Rob's collision. I didn't know what a ghost bike was, but after some research, I learned that it is a bicycle painted entirely white in memory of a cyclist who has been killed by a motor vehicle placed at the location of the incident. Unfortunately, some cities have multiple ghost bikes installed. However, in Winnipeg, Rob's ghost bike is the first. Let's ensure that there are no other tragedies like this. Installing the ghost bike was an unusual experience. A group of people I had never met before offered to host a memorial gathering for my husband, and in June 2025, we held another memorial. The biking community reached out to me so quickly that it made my head spin. I didn't know a single person who reached out to me for the group in the early days. I'm incredibly thankful for all the kind and compassionate individuals who have entered my life. They came to my home, and they cried with me, fed me, and listened to me as I spoke about Rob, how much he loved to cook, what a talented artist he was, and how much he enjoyed his bike rides. They welcomed me into their community, helped me buy a bike, and took me on a group rides. I hadn't been on a bike ride in ages, and it felt amazing to grieve Rob in this way. This past year has been filled with grief, court hearings, and city hall meetings. I'm exhausted. Many people tell me, Wendy, you don't have to do this. Step back and take a break. How can I? For me, it is knowing that I have done everything possible to ensure safety on this road and to honor Rob's memory so that his death is not in vain. After a year, the hope of having the court hearings completed has not materialized, as a trial for the passenger in the car that struck Rob is set to begin in fall 2025. Additionally, the city hall meetings in Winnipeg are ongoing on the Wellington Bike Lane Project. I retired in 2024 after more than 35 years as an administrative provincial civil servant, working primarily for ministers and deputy ministers. I understand the complexities of delays of voting and processes. However, I do not understand the delays we have encountered installing the temporary bike lane on Wellington. In December 2024, it seemed that the call to action was progressively positive six months after Rob's death. While many argue that this tragic killing is not a city issue, I challenge that it is. Yes, it was a reckless driver traveling at high speeds, which is true, but a bike lane might have prevented, might have provided him with the chance. The car could have hit the curb and veered off. The driver might have noticed a narrower street and chosen not to speed. Unfortunately, we will never know. Designing roads for slower speeds and educating young drivers about safe driving practices will help. I drive down Wellington each Wednesday at 7:30 to meet my grandchildren in Osborne Village. Rob was killed at 7:00 a.m. on a Thursday morning while riding to work. Currently, on the Wednesdays when I drive down Wellington, motors are tailgating my bumper, speeding past me. Each times this happens, I tense up and look around, hoping that there are no cyclists or pedestrians nearby when the speeders zoom around me. Therefore, I believe that the suggested 40 kilometers isn't a safe speed for this street either. The 30 kilometers are road diet and dedicated bike lanes with significantly enhanced safety. I have attended all the meetings here at city hall, both in person and via Zoom, where delegations have passionately advocated for safer streets. The beautiful biking community concerns citizens of Winnipeg and residents of Wellington.
Thank you. If you could just take a few moments to wrap up. Wendy?
For a minute.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor moves extension of two minutes? One minute? Wendy, what would you need?
Just a minute, two minutes.
Mr. Mayor moves extension of a minute. All in favor? Contrary, carried.
The beautiful biking community concerns citizens of Winnipeg and residents of Wellington have spoken for hours, presented global studies, shared deeply and very personal experiences, and bare their souls to her. Their dedication to making our city a safer place for everyone is truly remarkable. I'm here in this room speaking because fewer are the ones who can bring about this change. Thank you, Counselor Luks and Counselor Rollins, for your hard work in advocating for this issue and for bringing it this far. You both understand that the status quo is not good enough. We need to do better. I'm not going away. I will see this through. I know that once the temporary lanes are in place, we will recognize that we all did this together in making Winnipeg a better place to live. Thank you.
Just wanted to say, Wendy, on behalf of counsel, we know how difficult it is for you to present on this topic. The next delegation in opposition to this item is Arrow Van Dyk. If you could please come forward, and we'll have five minutes on the clock, and then we'll take questions. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello and good morning to the Chair, Mayor and counselors, city staff, and all of our community members who are here today. Thank you all for your time and attention this morning. My name is Arrow Van Dyk. I use she/her pronouns, and today I am here to speak in opposition to the Wellington Crescent Bike Lane Pilot Project as defined by the recommendations before you today. To begin, I would like to be very clear. I am in support of the design provided in the report from Public Works. I want to see it installed. I am, however, strongly opposed to three of the recommendations. Briefly, I'd like to echo what Wendy said regarding recommendation two. Thirty is safer than forty. I urge you to change that. According to recommendation three, the public service would be required to engage in consultations until February of 2026 before installing the bike lane next spring. This delay is unacceptable, and that's not just something that I can say for myself. The last two weeks at bike racks, intersections, and cycling events, I have spoken with over 400 cyclists about this bike lane, and how, since the April Public Works meeting, it has seen delay after delay. Counsel, I am here to say to you that I have never seen our community so moved to shock, anger, and distrust in the system. Among hundreds of cyclists, I couldn't find one who was not outraged by the idea that Wellington will remain as it is today until next spring. We want Winnipeg to be decisive and strategically agile in the pursuit of Vision Zero. Our community wants you to set a new precedent in which fatal crashes trigger immediate road design interventions. Speaking with over 400 cyclists, one thing became crystal clear. Whether you intended or not, delaying this bike lane, again, has one meaning for Winnipeg cyclists. We will protect you when it's convenient for us. I'd like to share a few quotes from the Public Works report on the Bike Lane Project. First, it states that, quote, "Over a 10-year period from 2012 to 2022, there were eight cycling collisions and five pedestrian collisions along Wellington Crescent in the gap between Academy Road to Stradbroke Avenue. That's an average of one every 280 days. As of today, it is 289 days until the 1st of May, which I imagine is the soonest construction could start. That is, if there are no further delays." Second, regarding the impact on traffic volumes, it states that, quote, "Modeling predicts that the pilot would result in minimal traffic impacts." The report also says, quote, "It is important to note that this four-phased approach is atypical of a traditional pilot. A pilot would typically see infrastructure put into place prior to any feedback collection. The proposed infrastructure could be implemented in 2025. The public service would then modify the plan to more closely resemble a typical pilot and collect feedback from both road users and fronting residents after they have an opportunity to experience the change." There you have it from the report itself. Wellington is dangerous for cyclists, the bike lane will have minimal traffic impacts, and this delay for consultation is inconsistent with the city practices. Given the contents of this report, the community demands that you ditch the delay. Regarding recommendation five, that Wellington become a top priority for a permanent and separated lane, what's planned here is good enough for now. Get it installed and save that level of priority and attention for the major bike network gaps in the city like the West End and the North End. Let's focus our efforts on a safe network that equitably connects all neighborhoods of Winnipeg before we worry about perfection on Wellington. Counselors, our community has been watching the decisions that have been made here. To borrow phrases from community members, "These delays have left us feeling angry at our political leadership, embarrassed at the state of cycling infrastructure in our city, and afraid that our next ride could be our last. We are pessimistic about Winnipeg's ability to adapt to big challenges when we see you getting tangled in atypical red tape over one bike lane. We feel like you value our lives more when we are inside of vehicles than you do when we are riding our bikes. We want to use this road to get to work, to Munson and Asinaboyne Parks, to visit friends in Osborne Village on the West End. I've heard from a wheelchair user who wants the new bike lane because those are often more accessible than our buckling sidewalks. When city council ignores our community by canceling delegations when we've taken the day off work or by letting us speak yet taking nothing we say under consideration, we feel disappointed, angry, and betrayed by those who are supposed to represent us. Counselors, we urge you to ditch the delay. We are angry, but we are hopeful that one of you will have the courage to make such an amendment and that the rest will support it. Whatever has you holding on to this, doing this pilot the atypical way, let it go. Look around the gallery. Everyone wearing red is a cyclist or loves a cyclist or just wants to see cyclists protected because it is the right thing to do. I want to leave you today with one more idea. Once you've agreed to ditch the delay, I'd like you to make sure that once this bike lane is installed and protecting cyclists on Wellington Crescent, that you break out those special blue street signs that are used to honor notable Winnipeggers and give this bike lane the name that it deserves, the honorary Rob Jenner Bike Way. Ditch the delay, do the right thing. Do it for me, do it for everyone wearing red today, do it for our whole community, do it for Wendy, do it for Rob. Thank you again for your attention today. I'll be happy to take any questions that you have.
I thought I made it very clear at the start of the meeting about demonstrations, so I will say it again. There is no clapping or cheering or any placards from the gallery. Thank you, Arrow, for your presentation. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you, and I wish you a good day.
Thank you all.
Okay. Reconvening that some may want to leave the gallery, we'll just take a few-minute break. Good morning. I'd like to reconvene our council meeting after a short reset since July 17th, 2025. We're on the report of the Executive Policy Committee dated July 8th. Mr. Mayor?
Madam Speaker, introduce the report. Move adoption of consent agenda items one to eighteen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Counselor Gilroy?
Aye. Thank you.
Counselor Gilroy, number eight? Number eight. Yes. Landfill search operations. Any others? Okay. Seeing none, call the question on one through seven, nine through eighteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, that's carried. Counselor Luks noted in opposition for number nine. Okay. Mr. Clerk?
Item eight, landfill search operations.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, your opportunity to introduce the item.
Thank you. I'll wait for my colleague to make her comments.
Thank you. Counselor Gilroy?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I was shocked when EPC would not allow this motion to move forward, so I'm asking my colleagues to reconsider this motion. We all know that Manitoba has the highest rates of missing and murdered Indigenous women and girls and Two-Spirited People in Canada. This motion didn't involve any spending. It simply asked for a report back on lessons learned and how we can move forward. It aimed to examine how other jurisdictions have reduced landfill-related cost to ensure we don't repeat past mistakes where cost was prioritized over human dignity. I was not proud of how the city responded. Most of us in this room supported a motion to send a clear message to the province that we support the landfill search. And now to say that we're not even willing to look at our own resources, our own tools, and reflect as a council, it quite frankly shocks me. We are here to ask the questions and not just be fine with the status quo. That is a big part of our job. The province can worry about the rest of the landfills in the province. However, I want to know what we are doing here in Winnipeg. And I want to know what other cities are doing and what we can learn from in the wake of this extreme issue that we faced. There is no, there's no cost to what we can do here. We should have a protocol in place when these issues arise. We need coordination between all levels of government, and we need a landfill that is ready and equipped, whether through better technology or improved planning, to ensure that in the future, we don't, again, put ahead the cost over human life injustice. This motion is a concrete act under the Truth and Reconciliation Commission's calls to action, especially forty, forty-one, and forty-two, which focuses on justice for Indigenous peoples. Manitoba is well-documented crisis of murdered and missing Indigenous women, including recent cases where the remains are believed to be located in our landfills. The National Inquiry of Murdered, Missing, and Indigenous Women called for the issue, called the issue a Canadian genocide, and emphasized the need for justice, dignity, and, most important, systematic reform. And this is us, the city, a system that needs reform. Cities and jurisdictions have implemented protocols and adopted technologies to make landfill searches more efficient, safer, and even more responsive to public concerns, including bodily recovery or criminal investigations. I want to talk to you a little bit about what other cities are doing, so to say that, yeah, we do have some technology, but it's not the be all and end all. Salt Lake City uses thermal imaging and landfill GPS mapping to locate remains. They use real-time digital tracking, which is some of what we do, but they have a lot more cost-effective tools. Edmonton uses a combination of technologies and methods to manage and monitor its landfill sites. They use ground-penetrating radar they use to locate buried waste, infrastructures, and voids, GS and drone mapping. So there's lots of information that we should be learning from other cities on what we can be doing. There's lots of work with other cities also being both proactive and being prepared so that when there are searches, that they have the collaborated efforts between Winnipeg, between their police services, their national police service, and the level of governments that are needed to help with the costs. Quite frankly, I think we should be prepared. There's no cost to us doing this. This is just asking for a report back, and I find it, I find it shameful that we're not moving forward with this. I think this is the least that we could be doing. I think that our role and our job is to ask tough questions, making sure that we're not standing with the status quo, and making sure that we are progressing as a city. And so I'm asking you not to listen to EPC's recommendation. This is just a report that goes to Water and Waste, and for them to write a report back with its due diligence. The only cost is the time that it's going to take to write this report. And quite frankly, I hope, I know the mayor has talked, that there are discussions with the province, and I know it's been reported that the province is working on other landfills across the province, but we have to be prepared as a city, and that's what I want to hear from my public service. So I want to know more than just making sure that my mayor is in dialogue with the province. I want to know that there's a protocol in place, Madam Speaker. So that's what this motion is asking for, and I'm asking for a recorded vote to ensure that we are doing what we should be doing in terms of, that we're progressing and that we're going to have a protocol in place, Madam Speaker, and that we're going to learn from best practices and that we're going to learn from lessons learned. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Counselor Gilroy. Counselor Edie, followed by Counselor Rollins.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm rising. I'm supportive of doing what we can to, well, I don't know if you can prevent it out at the Brady out at the Brady landfill, but to do our best at monitoring and providing for the proper technologies at the Brady landfill. Madam Speaker, just, I'll give some details. So actually, I was kind of involved a little bit back with Tanya Nipinak back in, I believe it was 2012, where they really stopped the search, Madam Speaker, because of cost. However, there were some lessons learned about trying to find missing murdered women. And back then, I believe there were no actual video cameras in the collection vehicles that go around and pick up all the stuff, but there definitely is today. The GIS and using drones, they have those systems set up at Brady landfill. They do, in order to check for volume and things within there, they fly a drone over and it is mapped and it's looked at. It's using the GIS system. But Water and Waste, Solid Waste Division, they're always open to learning new, maybe better methods through operations and those sorts of things. And our Solid Waste Department does work directly with the province in terms of dealing with searching for missing and murdered women. One thing I would note, the province in implementing this, one of the things we have to do is we're building a new cell in order to accept all that's collected before the cell where it has to be searched for current missing and murdered women. So they've had to expedite that, and we, while the taxpayers of Winnipeg are paying to ensure that that happens, they're also working with the Camp Morgan. They're helping to clean up that space. They're not pushing anybody away. The people advocating and pushing for looking for missing murdered women, we are working at it, and there's many other details that they're working at. And they've already been described, Madam Speaker, about a potential for looking at how they might be able to search for Tanya Nipinak, which is close to my heart because her sister, her sister, it was tough back then. And the chief of police was very, at the time, was very concerned as well, but as councillor Gilroy has mentioned, you know, that cost factor came up and what is the price? What is the price? What is the price to, that the people are suffering here? We have to do something, and we are. We're doing that. If this is simply calling a report... So the real problem I have with this motion is just that it assumes that we're not using the proper technology, that we're not doing things. And they continue to always explore better means to run their operations, to determine things as soon as possible. We did hear, now I don't know what happened, but we did hear in recycling collection not long ago, that the process, I mean, they discovered body parts, Madam Speaker, and anyway, and they found it pretty quick, Madam Speaker. And so the technologies are being used in our solid waste collection and dealing with these matters. So I'm good with a report coming back from the public service because then it could be detailed, but again, we're putting a lot of dollars in here. The province is asking us to provide several resources, Madam Speaker, so that the searches will go well, and the Solid Waste Division is kept apprised of means that they will attempt to find Tanya Nipinak and other missing and murdered women, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Next is councillor Rollins.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm just, I'm going to point out that the motion isn't just about technology, but indeed it's about a report, and so I was happy to hear the Chair of Water and Waste say that he's good with a report. I think it is important to ground this, as he did, Madam Speaker, when he acknowledges the really tough thing to say, that body parts are indeed in the landfill and that there is technology that explores and can find them. I think that it is really important to acknowledge what it is in a ceremonial way, which is a burial site, for lack of better words. It won't, God willing, be the final burial site, but it is a burial site nonetheless. And we have obligations, Madam Speaker, to, that we know full well, because many of us have been involved in ceremony with historical burial sites, in particular on children's remains in line with the TRC Calls to Action, but I will talk about the MMIWG Calls to Justice and the work of the federal government in looking at Indigenous burial sites and more protections for them. It isn't right, though, I will address first off, to distance ourselves as a form of government and from our obligations. While we may be a creature of the province in reconciliation, when it comes to burial sites, I think if we look at Indigenous children and our efforts to look at burial sites within the city and some of the council-directed motions, for instance, on the Joinet-Orlincher Principles, which is the right to truth, and to ensure no records are destroyed without free prior informed consent, which this council has done a few times, most recently with respect to the Archives, that it's important to understand that Winnipeg, prior to Canada perhaps adopting UNDRIP, prior to Canada's work on this, can act. City of Winnipeg can act, and this is what councillor Gilroy's motion points to, is these actions and information that is critical, not just for us, Madam Speaker, but indeed Indigenous governments. Winnipeg has obligations to protect truth. We have obligations to look at the legislation that we know is coming federally, that will establish a National Commission of Investigation, that will publicly acknowledge Indigenous people as victims of enforced disappearance, as was consistent and/or genocide, as was consistent with both the TRC and MMIWG Calls to Action. We have obligations with respect to protection of all people on that enforced disappearances, and we have obligations, you know, we have obligations. We also have to ensure accountability, and part of that accountability is embedded in this motion with respect to Indigenous sovereignty and their, how else are we going to ensure that that is a product that we can ensure Indigenous data and sovereignty without a report? We have an obligation to repatriate, and while we're waiting for this legislation, we are fully aware that we have that obligation to make sure that Indigenous governments have the ability to repatriate, and that is something that, you know, all chiefs have been here to remind us. All chiefs have been reminding us when they signed on to search the landfill. And Winnipeg has a record of not searching, and frankly, Madam Speaker, this council hasn't done a statement similar to what Chief Bowers has done recently. So this report goes a long way in declaring our interests and grounding it in our international, national, and very local obligations to make sure that we're a city that understands our role in colonization, our role in ensuring that genocides don't happen, and determining and actioning the calls to action that each one of us signed on to the Indigenous accord for. So I think that we need to see, we need to see this motion in light of some of the obligations councils already stood up for, and in context with the Office of the Independent Special Interlocutor for Missing Children and Unmarked Graves and Burial Sites Associated, not just with Indian residential schools, but with the genocide that we know that the city of Winnipeg is at the forefront of, unfortunately, missing and murdered Indigenous women and girls, and that's why it was headquartered here, Madam Speaker. So I'll call, like councillor Gilroy did, for a recorded standing vote.
Okay, thank you. Next, any further speakers on this item? Councillor Wyatt?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank councillor Rollins and councillor Gilroy for their work on this matter.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, do you wish to close?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. I can tell you, you know, just to assure us all, our staff in Water Waste, particularly right now, is very actively working with the province of Manitoba, who's undertaking the preparations for a search of the Brady Road landfill for the remains of Ashley Shingus. And the province is leading on that, those preparations. The province will be managing ultimately that work, but our staff, as I said, is actively engaged with them at this time. I'm hoping that we, you know, have something more that to, we hear from them, I hope, in the coming weeks or certainly months ahead, on what the next steps would be. In doing the work, I know our staff from Water Waste has, you know, reminded me that they'll be utilizing the systems, the technology that we do have in place at Brady Road. The G, as councillor Edie so well said, he outlined several things that we do use, which includes GIS, which is Geographic Information Systems. We utilize remote sensing. We use both GIS to manage the data, remote drone for volume survey and landfill surface tracking, so a lot of technology we already do have in place. Certainly, you know, our staff has indicated, we would expect nothing less, that they're always looking to learn more and be able to identify new technology that could be utilized to certainly manage the entire landfill and be able to track where each load that comes into the site would be placed. And so this is work that's ongoing right now. I'm confident that we are going to hear more in the months ahead about the next steps related to the search. So, and I think frankly, you know, after, when this is all done in sometime in the future, no doubt there'll be opportunity to reflect and look back on some of the lessons that have this upcoming search will afford us and see what changes need to be made as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, I'll call the question. All in favor, please rise. Please, recorded vote was called for. All in favor, please rise. Okay, just to be clear, the recommendation before us, the recommendation before us is to receive the item as information, okay? So all in favor of the recommendation before us, please rise.
Councillors Bruati, Chambers, Dobson, Duncan, his worship, Mayor Gillingham, councillor Luke, Mays, and Madam Speaker, councillor Sharma.
Those opposed, please rise.
Councillors Allard, Edie, Gilroy, Orliko, Rollins, Santos, and Wyatt.
The vote, Madam Speaker, ayes eight, nays seven.
Item 8 passes. Okay, next, we're moving on to notice of motions. Mr. Clerk, correct? Okay, notice of motions, of course, are under the jurisdiction of EPC. First, we have the notice of motion moved by councillor Mays, seconded by councillor Orliko, as regarding the renaming of the Lindenwood Drive West Park to Caitlin Law's Park. Mr. Mayor, councillor Mays, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. There are two motions very similar to one another. My thanks to councillor Orliko, who seconded this motion as the park in question would be in councillor Orliko's ward, though somehow I've agreed to pay for the new sign, but I'll figure that out. The second motion, my thanks to councillor Duncan, who, that park would be in councillor Duncan's ward again, St. Vital Ward paying for the sign. Now, why would that be? Because these two women were both part of the St. Vital Curling Club golden era, where both in 2014, when Jennifer Jones's team won the Olympic gold medal undefeated run actually at the Olympics, they were part of that team. They were the lead in the third. And then in 2018, Caitlin Law's came back with a male curler and won the mixed doubles for the first time when it was contested in 2018. So historic breakthrough events. To, a couple of additional thoughts. We've already named parks for the other two members of this team. In fact, more than a decade ago, we named them. We named Jennifer Jones Park, which has migrated from councillor Van Dal's ward to councillor Allard's ward to councillor Wyatt's ward without ever actually changing place. It's near Windsor Park across on the south side of Fermore. So we have Jennifer Jones Park still to be built, but we've also had Jill Officer Park, which is a very fine park. I'm told there's a very nice running track nearby in councillor Bruati's ward. It just seems to be consistent to name two more parks. Councillor Allard had raised some issues at previous debates about have these people been vetted? Yeah, we've had three years of these names being in the system, no issues about character. We handed out a briefing package put together by my assistant, far from issues about character, lots of charitable involvement. Caitlin Law's, I know, was a great champion of Canada Games, having been a gold medalist in that herself, so that helped us get that bid in 2017, and we've been the beneficiary of that. So I don't want to get into some of the background here and issues around process, but it's been a three-year lead-up, and here we are at the day today, so hopefully we can back these parks and move on. Why these parks, these are parks identified by these two women as being in their neighborhoods, as being ones where they grew up. I know Dawn McEwen talked about taking her kids to this park, so it'd be quite a thing, I think, if we can just sort of complete the four names. And I guess I get to close as well, but briefly, Madam Speaker, you'll remember when Susan Thompson was here some years ago when we named the building on your initiative, and she got up and said, in essence, "You folks should be naming more stuff after women." And I think I've tried to listen to that. So here we have a great opportunity to put that into play, and we don't, you know, they asked if they needed to be here. I said, "You don't need to be here to do this," so hopefully we can unanimously back these two parks. And certainly worthy recipients. When Caitlin Law's won the gold medal in 2018, it's like 5:00 in the morning and I'm at the St. Vital Curling Club, and CBC said to me, "Are you going to name a street?" And I said, "No, we're going to name a, I'd like to name a park because that would be consistent with Jill Officer and Jennifer Jones." So here we are, all these years later, as Caitlin Law said, I think I've had two kids since then, but here we are with a chance to actually put this right. So those are my opening comments.
Thank you. Councillor Mays, any further speakers? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I support this. You can call the question, please. Oh, I guess he gets to close.
Yes. Councillor Mays, any other speakers? Councillor Mays to close?
I'm hoping to get some French language content in here at some point today due to my intern being a French immersion student from DC, but I'll skip that for today and Allard, and I'll sort that out. So I will, thank you, I'll call the question.
All in favor? Contrary, that's carried. Our next notice of motion is moved by councillor Mays and seconded by councillor Duncan, as regarding the renaming of Berkeley Square Park to Dawn McEwen Park. Councillor Mays to introduce the item?
Roughly same again, member of the team. I believe Dawn's now retired, although sometimes these curlers make these comebacks and they're playing on different teams, so she's continuing to have a successful curling run. Dawn McEwen, of course, married to the very- Dawn McEwen, of course, married to the very successful Mike McEwen. Yeah, it's a park, she was very pleased with this idea, because it's near where they live, in Counselor Duncan's ward. You know, we're getting, this has gone on for a while now, and people are saying, "Well, oh, my kids play with their kids on the softball team," so it's kind of a nice moment. So hopefully we can do the same thing here and honor Ms. McEwen.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Seeing none, Counselor Mays, do you wish to close?
Call the question, please.
All in favor? Contrary, that's carried. We'll now move into notice of motion moved by Counselor Wyatt and seconded by Counselor Orliko regarding an update on the Caspian Construction Settlement. Counselor Wyatt?
Yeah, Madam Speaker, I'd like to move referral on this item.
Referral to EPC.
Wherever it should go.
Okay. Okay, all in favor? Carried. Okay. Now move on to motions under EPC. We have motion one, that's moved by myself and seconded by the mayor, as regarding council appointments, which you're all well aware of. Mr. Mayor, will you move suspension?
So moved, Madam Speaker.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried. And Mr. Mayor, if you wouldn't mind introducing the motion.
Certainly, Madam Speaker, thank you. Yes, there's been a few, a little bit of movement with myself stepping off a couple of committees, and so we do, and with Counselor Sharire's passing, I know that there needs to be replacement related to the PP&amp;D. So here we have a motion. You can see it, I'll just quickly say, the resolution, that Counselor Bruati be appointed to the Standing Policy Committee on Property and Development, Counselor Duncan be appointed to, two, that Counselor Duncan be appointed to the Winnipeg Police Board, three, that Counselor Luks be appointed to the Winnipeg Metropolitan Region Board, four, proper officers of the city be authorized to do all things necessary to implement the intent of the foregoing, so moved.
Thank you. All in favor? Contrary, that's carried. Now move into motion two, moved by Counselor Mays and seconded by Counselor Gilroy, as regarding the outreach efforts of St. Boniface Street Links and the Main Street Project.
Can I move to suspend there, please, Madam Speaker?
Yes, Counselor Mays moves to suspend the rules to have the motion considered today. It's motion two that's been circulated. Okay, all in favor?
Do I need to?
Okay, contrary? Okay. It's going to be an automatic referral to the Executive Policy Committee. Motion. Motion three, moved by the mayor and seconded by Counselor Santos, as regarding the Government of Canada to amend the Criminal Code. It'll be an automatic referral to Executive Policy Committee. We'll now move on to bylaws for all three readings. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that the following bylaws be read a first time. Bylaw number 70, 2025, bylaw number 71, 2025.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried.
Bylaws numbered 70 of 2025 and 71 of 2025.
Mr. Mayor?
Madam Speaker, I move that the bylaws number 70, 2025, and 71, 2025 be read a second time.
All in favor?
Just from the communicate, one can't ask questions about the communications, which are, of course, at the top of the agenda. I can follow the other one, the next one, the, that's clearly coming out of Counselor Duncan's commendable motion when we did the four-day hearing. It is unclear to me where, what is the originating hearing or vote that creates number 70? That was not clear to me.
You have question of 70 of 2025?
Yes, and you're moving along so quickly here. I'm sorry, I didn't get that in before first reading, but...
Mr. Clerk, the answer, please, the response? In a sense, specifically about 70, 2025, correct?
Correct. We can get back to the counselor on that, but...
Well, yeah, well, wait.
Well, we can get back to you after the lunch recess. We could do that.
I mean, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, I just, I can't quite figure out where it's coming from, frankly.
The clerk will clarify, just don't have the information right in front of him, it looks like at this moment. If I can come back to this section, or Mr. Mayor, you may be able to shine some light on that bylaw?
Not at this point, but if you, if we want to, I'm fine to hold on the third vote, and until we get clarity, if possible, and we can go to, with your direction, we can go to question period.
Okay, thank you. We'll pause here, and we'll go to question period.
Was okay. 70, that was the problem.
Yeah, that's fine, we can do them all together. We'll come back to this section. We'll move on to question period for the mayor. Any questions? Counselor Mays?
Getting in one of everything today, motions, questions, announcements. A follow-up question to the mayor, and I'd indicated to his staff I'd be bringing this up. At the last meeting, I'd asked about our combined sewer program. Commendably, we're getting a rate report this fall that will include the cost of, if the city goes it alone on the big three, Jefferson Mission and Ferry Road, what would the implications of that be? And I'd asked, can we please get the costing both with the 100% contingency built in, that's always been used on the CSO matters, solely on these CSO matters, can we also get the lower cost? So the, that is the difference between costing something out at $405 million versus $810 million plus construction inflation. If the numbers are incorrect, blame my intern for the last two weeks, who was helping me out with the numbers. But in all seriousness, at the last Water and Waste Committee, staff seemed to acknowledge that, yes, we're going to move forward with costing it at the lower amount. The practical impact of that would be to shave 47 years off our projected completion date for the CSO work, which is worth attention. It's a fantastic item, if it's true. So I think we're on the same page here, but I just wanted to ask the mayor for his comments, his confirmation that we're going to get this costing, and it's going to be based on the lower amount that was used in the 2019 report, not the, so $405 million, basically not $810 million.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, your response?
Through you, Madam Speaker. I want to thank the council for the question and his ongoing work related to combined sewer overflows and the pursuit of completing some of the most significant work that will really gain us the most benefit. I think that's important. I want to kind of highlight what Counselor Mays had been talking about before, and the good work now that Counselor Ross Edie is doing as the Chair of this committee. There are three big projects, and accomplishing those three big projects, including St. Boniface Mission District, the Jefferson District, the Ferry Road, those, those big projects, those big three CSO projects, once those are completed, they will have a significant impact. I should remember the number, if it's 80% or something like that, reduction, maybe that's the wrong number, but by far the most significant reduction in all of our CSO problems, those three projects reduce it the most, if we can get those three done. And so there are two reports, in fact, that are coming back this fall to the council's question and point. The first report will really be an update on the current schedule of the St. Boniface Mission District and the Jefferson District, two out of the three, compared to the original master plan, and both are on track to be completed by 2045. And the report will also discuss how each district's completion really data compares with the 2019 plan. And so those reports will indeed not use a 100% contingency, which would take us to, you know, if we use 100% contingency on everything, it takes us well out into, you know, maybe somewhere close to 2095, or somewhere way, way off in the future. But by using frankly more realistic contingency number, it shrinks the timeline significantly. And so we expect to see, you know, reports that use a number of contingency that is somewhere in that midway point, not 100%, but somewhere realistic, less than 100%, which ultimately part of the, the impact of using that more realistic number is a reduced timeline. And so the second report that we'll get has to do, as the council head indicated, a water and sewer rate adjust report due in the fall. That also will use something other than 100% contingency rate as well. So kind of a long answer to say the council, I believe, is on the right track here. Our staff will bring these reports forward, look forward to them, think at the end of the day, what they're going to show is these three big CSO projects, if we can get them done, will make a significant positive net impact on reducing combined sewer overflows into our system.
Thank you. Next question, Counselor Mays?
Yes, thanks to the mayor for that. That is good news. That is a billion dollars saved and 48 years, by my math, from the projected completion date. So that's a pretty good day at the office. So, and as the mayor's indicated, thank you to Counselor Edie for his work on this, trying to move this along. We will still have to vote in the fall on, do we want to do this to our rates? But I think that's a cleaner vote than it, than adding any huge contingency. So, yes, all three of these projects, some done even by 2029, Jefferson done by 2042, I think. So will the mayor miss my repeated references to 2095, is my question? Or is he delighted that we're actually going to get this thing done in the 2040s?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Um, no, I won't miss them.
Okay, next speaker, Counselor Rollins, your question for the mayor?
Thank you. Madam Speaker, it's been the second audit of the mayor's office that has found materiality. I wondering, my first question is, can the mayor comment on the mayor's office budget audit, the first item in communications today?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm wondering if the council has a specific question related to the audit?
Thank you. Counselor Rollins?
Sure. In one instance, it found that there was ineligible expense per the policy, and another, it found a donation receipt issued in the mayor's name. Can he detail what donation receipt was detailed in the mayor's name?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, could certainly look into the specifics of that and get back to the council.
Thank you. Second question?
There were salaries in the mayor's office that were inaccurate or not in accordance with policy. Could he tell us which salaries they were and what human resources they would point to with respect to his office staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Again, Madam Speaker, glad to look into the matter and get back to the council.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, that'll conclude question period. I'd like to go back to the bylaw section. The Counselor Mays, you had a question about bylaw number 70 of 2025. It corresponds with item one of the report of EPC today, the Housing Accelerator Grant Program bylaw amendments. Any further questions?
Clarify, the Housing Accelerator Grant Programs that is found in the PND agenda items, so...
EPC, item one.
EPC, item one.
Yes, dated July 8th, the reports we already dealt with, yes.
Okay, with, go ahead, Mays, go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to proceed if we can then with the vote on the bylaws, unless there's anything further.
So there was no public hearing required prior to that? We've had obviously different hearing bodies for different parts of the HAF, so it gets a bit tricky, but there were no, no...
This wasn't a zoning amendment. It's just a grant program.
Ah, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, sure.
Okay, so moving on, I'll, Mr. Mayor, if you could move the second reading?
Okay, Madam Speaker, I will then move the bylaws number 70, 20...
With the grant program, it's to do with, the item one was to do, I apologize for interrupting, it was to, it was amending leased purchasing, it was amending mixed-use corridors portions in the downtown.
Okay, Counselor Rollins, I think the question, the question was posed. It is corresponding with item one of EPC. This is not time to debate bylaws. If you don't, if you are not in agreement, then feel free to vote against the bylaw. Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. I move the bylaws number 70, 2025, and 71, 2025 be read a second time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried. Counselor Rollins noted in opposition?
Bylaws number 70 of 2025 and 71 of 2025.
Mr. Mayor?
I move that the rule be suspended, and bylaws number 70, 2025, and 71, 2025 be read a third time, and the same be passed in order to be signed and sealed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried. We can move on to property and development. Counselor Duncan, on the report dated July 4th?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to introduce the report and move it option consent agenda items one through 16.
Okay, one through 16, any to be polled? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Contrary, carried. Okay, Counselor Duncan? Okay, I'm sorry, I need to go back to something, because I've missed it. Under EPC, there was motion eight that's been circulated, and that was a notice of motion moved by Counselor Mays and seconded by Counselor Allard, and it's regarding the park naming in honor of James Peoples. Okay, that's a notice of motion, and that'll appear on the September council agenda. Back to PP&amp;D Committee, Counselor Duncan on the bylaws.
Thank you again, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move bylaw number 69, 2025, be read a first time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried.
Bylaw number 69 of 2025.
I'd like to move the bylaw number 140 of 2024, be read a second time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried.
Bylaw number 140 of 2024.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to move the bylaw number 140 of 2024, be read a third time, and the same be passed in order to be signed and sealed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, that's carried. Now, there's another motion, but I don't have a copy, Mr. Clerk, so please give it to me. Thank you. Going back to Executive Policy Committee, correct? Oh, under PND, okay. I don't have that, so thank you. That is motion seven, moved by Counselor Rollins, seconded by Counselor Mays, and the topic is, Mr. Clerk?
It's regarding reserving Wildwood to Tomorrow Vision.
Okay, thank you. Yes, so you have that, you all have that, motion seven, and it's regarding the Wildwood into Tomorrow Vision. Okay, that'll be an automatic referral to the Standing Committee. I think we'll take a recess now and come back at 1:00?
Question?
We could, yeah. Question period under this committee. Any questions for Counselor Duncan? Okay, seeing none, let's conclude there and come back at 1:00? Thank you. I'd like to reconvene our council meeting of July 17th, 2025. We're on the Standing Policy Committee on Water and Waste and the Environment. Counselor Edie, our Chair, on the report dated June 27th. There is an amending motion, Counselor Edie, as you know, for item five.
That's right. Madam Speaker, I rise to present the report and move consent agenda items one through four.
Aye.
Contrary, that's carried. Item, yes, we have an amending motion for item five as stated. Mr. Clerk? Okay, item five, Counselor Edie?
Yes.
Mr. Clerk?
I'd be introducing the amendment and the report. Madam Speaker, and actually, if I could have the clerks just read the be it resolved...
Thank you, we were just going to do that. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Opt-out program for advanced metering system, moved by Counselor Edie, seconded by Counselor Mays. Be it resolved that item five of the report of the Standing Policy Committee on Water, Waste and Environment dated June 27th, 2025, be amended by deleting recommendations one to three and replacing with the following. One, that prior to the installation of new meters, the Winnipeg Public Service be directed to present alternative options as described in the report, as well as an option to not have a transmitter installed on the property to rate payers who can provide proof of need of a medical exemption such as a medical letter signed by a registered medical doctor in any of the Canadian provinces or territories, or proof of the ability to claim the Canada Revenue Agency disability tax credit. Two, that the proper officers of the city be authorized to do all things necessary to implement the intent of the foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. Prince Lu. Okay, so the report itself, so just for clarification, council asked Water and Waste Department to go out... Department to go out and look at other cities as to what an opt-out program would look like and come back with a report on, on what that opt-out program would look like. Some people misinterpreted the wording and thought that we were bringing in an opt-out program. The recommendation in report number five recommends that there is no opt-out program. So this amendment that's being proposed is actually merely recognizing that under human rights laws of Manitoba and of Canada, that we should accommodate persons with disabilities. So the amendment refers to a medical doctor who is registered, certified to practice in Canada, or if, which they would have had to do in order to get the disability tax credit on your taxes, as I do. I'm totally blind and I am limited in my day-to-day life, and they would have to prove that as well. So what we're doing is we're recognizing it's there, and for those who don't, the department is quite willing to adjust the, so you have the actual meter that's reading the water, and then digital meter, which is much more accurate than analog, and there's also the transmission of that data. It is the transmission of that data we heard presented to us here today by presenters, as well as at Water, Waste and Environment and Executive Policy Committee. So the amendment isn't really recommending an opt-out program, it's recommending an accommodation for those who have proof of disability regarding the transmission waves that we heard about. So I am moving this because it's just recognizing, and I am a person with a disability, if it's certified by a medical doctor, then that's good. This isn't about, oh, I need a note from my employer, and doctors just sign off on it, Madam Speaker. That doesn't happen. That's not, that's not how it works when you're trying to look at and proof of disability. That's not how it works. This approach was tried when we had the walk-up service for collection of garbage and recycle carts, Madam Speaker. We went through this in my first term and the discussion. Right now, medical certification that the person has a disability that doesn't allow them to put out the carts on collection, they, and also the, they don't have anybody in the household that could do it for them. So this program, though, would see, when they're talking to each customer, because you can't just come into somebody's house and install something, you gotta request to come in and change the meter. So it's all gonna go digital. This isn't about keeping an analog system, and I've had discussions with Mr. Shanks and the department that maybe we'll have to, right now, the water bylaw states one actual reading a year, and we just heard that the billing center gets all these calls because of estimated water bills. That's the majority of the calls. We don't want any more estimation. The actual will be good for everybody, and because usually when we estimate, it goes a little bit higher because we're not quite sure what's been used. So maybe we have to amend the bylaw that if somebody is not using the transmission, that they will be required to call in a reading every period of time. That makes sense for the department. So I'll leave it at that. I see no reason why this amendment should cause anybody problems. It is not establishing an opt-out program for anybody. It's an accommodation for a person who's considered to have a disability.
Thank you, Counsel Eadie. Counsel Orliko?
Thank you very much. I was actually on the committee when this meetings and the many meetings we had regarding the concerns of some residents regarding the electronics. Again, I'm not a scientist, I clearly know the right terminology, but the waves, radio waves coming from their house. And I understand what a lot of people say, it's like, you know, tinfoil hat people. Well, you know what? No, they're not. They may or may, it doesn't really matter. They, they do really believe, and I do actually have been convinced after the numerous meetings I've had, some people really are sensitive to these, these radio waves. So the motion that we put forward back in the day, which I found really interesting, it asked administration, which we approved as council, to come back out with an opt-out program. Well, the administration comes back with, hey, you shouldn't do one anymore. I didn't, we didn't ask council for that. We asked, council direction was to do an opt-out program, not to recommend if we want to do one, not to ask us if, you know, knows an answer. I was quite, so I go, okay, they really didn't take the direction well. What I wanted to see was an opt-out program. And so they did put something to their credit together, which won't cost the city anything. So it's an accommodation. It costs the resident who may be able to get a disability tax credit or some other system a fair bit of money, so, but it doesn't cost the city. We know the city's broke. And, you know, to Counsel Eadie's point, this will generate a lot of money. This, because we know the old meters are not spinning fast enough, the water, people of water bills are gonna go up, just by the fact that their actual consumption now will be actually recorded properly. The old meters, including mine, I'll be confessed, are probably underreporting the water that I'm using. So that's actually how we're gonna pay for this whole program, really, in the other day. So if it's saying, hey, city of Winnipeg, we gotta spend $5 million. Well, we know, we heard today from the bike, the bike lobby, that we need to invest more money there for safety, health and safety. We know from traffic safety people, we know from sewer, we know from a lot of people. There's a lot of health and safety issues we have to deal with in the city of Winnipeg. And yes, most of those health and safety issues cost the city a lot of money. Environmental, environment costs us money, and trade, and that costs all money. But in this case, what we're saying is, we, the city of Winnipeg, understand, I think they've said it's like .01 or .02, which works out to be about 500 homes, that's what I estimated, that, you know, would pick up on this program. So that's 500 homes. To me, that's not insignificant. That's something. Now, how many people will actually show up and pay them, pay the money? I don't know. Again, so I do appreciate Counsel Eadie's amending motion, and in light of the fact that I've seen the votes go forward, which I, I'd say I wasn't pleased with, I could just vote against both of these and keep my hands clean on it, but I won't. I think, I think the compromise is being forward, at least try to accommodate people. Let's just try to accommodate people. You don't have to believe them or not, that's fine, but can we not accommodate them that doesn't cost the city huge amounts of money? Counsel Eadie's motion does that. It allows at least accommodation. It won't please everybody, but that's, you know, we are in a big city with a lot of different people and opinions, so we try to do what we can. So I am gonna be supporting Counsel Eadie's amending motion. I think it's a fair attempt, even though that's not what we asked for from council. It's not, but it is where we're at today. So I think Counsel Eadie, I want to thank you for this amending motion, and the person with the disability understands that we must strive always to accommodate all Winnipeggers, not the ones we just believe in or not. So I believe Counsel Eadie's motion is a good attempt to find that middle ground between both having a real opt-out clause, which I would have supported, versus denying people that opportunity to be accommodated, even though it won't cost the city any money. So I appreciate Counsel Eadie's, so I'll be supporting the amending motion, but if this fails, then I won't, I won't be able to support the EPC motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mays, followed by the mayor.
Thank you, very well said by the two preceding speakers, so I don't really have a whole lot to add. One concern I had was, yeah, there was direction from council to the public admin to come back with an opt-out plan, program, option, and that just didn't happen. We were just told, no, it's not, it's not efficient, it's not viable, yet other cities have such a thing, which is why we directed it in the first place. So that was disappointing, but I want to commend Counsel Eadie for coming up with this compromise that was the wording at Water and Waste. It was unanimously passed, Counsel Chambers and Counsel Eadie and I all voted for this. You know, there was some discussion of, well, what if there's an opt-out, but you make it really expensive? And Counsel Eadie pointed out, I think correctly, well, that's just penalizing the person with a disability. I don't think that'll survive a human rights challenge, so, okay, what else could we do? So Counsel Eadie, to his credit, came up with this plan, which Counsel Chambers and I both supported. It seems like a reasonable accommodation for people, and as Counsel Orliko said, some people may not think these people have a disability, but it requires medical certification. We heard from a number of people at committee, we've heard from some of them in previous iterations of this policy. So the policy itself is, is a good idea. It's, I think, 120 million, it'll take several years, we'll have it in the reserve, we'll roll this out to modernize the water meter, but let's not leave behind one small segment who are saying, hey, we, we have issues with this, we have a disability, you should accommodate us. And so quite well worded by Counsel Eadie to make sure the same meter is installed, but then you just disable part of it and the people will have to call in their readings. So certainly supportive of it, as Counsel Chambers and I both were at committee. Thanks to Counsel Eadie for bringing this forward, and hopefully others can support it today, and we can move forward. It's, it's, it's a big initiative that makes sense, but let's not forget this one little group of people who do, do have disabilities, as Counsel Eadie said, that are recognized for tax purposes, recognized for medical purposes. I think we should recognize those as well here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, followed by Counsel Brawdy?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I think just to clarify, our staff has indicated that they have to accommodate medical, human rights issues regardless of whether or not we have an opt-out program. They're compelled by law to accommodate people's health issues as required. And so I, I think ultimately, I believe we're getting to the same place. I'm not gonna be supporting the amending motion, though I understand the reason behind it, because ultimately, the laws of the land require our staff, compel our staff, to assist people that have medical needs and to accommodate their, their, their needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel Brawdy, followed by Counsel Rowland?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I will not be supporting Counsel Eadie's amending motion. This again comes back to some of the, you know, issues about people's perceptions about radio communications. You know, Health Canada, Industry Canada, all these various groups have determined that at the levels that they are, that they are safe, but I mean, in our communities, we have cell towers all over the place. You know, in high-rise apartment blocks along our major corridors in the city, there's cellphone antennas that could be located literally feet away from a baby's crib. These are determined in, in Canada and around the world to be within, to be, to be considered to be safe. So us trying to determine what is and isn't, if a medical doctor says that somebody actually has a legitimate sensitivity, and we have a human rights obligation to provide an opt-out, so be it. But, but otherwise, I will not be supporting Counsel Eadie's amending motion, but again, understand that the, the program will, will move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Rowland?
Madam Speaker, I'm wondering if the mover in the close can confirm the assertion made by Counsel Orliko that the opt-out program would indeed make the city money, and if so, if they could point in their closing, or pay for itself? Or what is the economics of the, the, the opt-out, and can, and did the department confirm that? So we have a report before us, no opt-out, but there is a motion before us. Can any of the assertions on the finances be, be confirmed? Because, Madam Speaker, like Counsel Brawdy summarized, I too am unconvinced about delegation's words on, and, and have read the World Health Organization, Health Canada's reports and more on the science, and, you know, I'm concerned that it's acting as a tax on non-evidence-based, non-evidence-based science, and, and, and that is a compelling decision for me, for two different reasons, actually.
Thank you. Next is Counsel Lukes.
Thank you very much. So there's been a lot of discussion on this, and I've worked with some of the folks that have come and presented on cell towers in the past, and I want to just note here what Tim Shanks has said, and I am rather disappointed, I will say this, that this wasn't clearly written into the report, but the city has to accommodate medical and human rights issues regardless if we've got an opt-out program or not. And if a customer has documented health issues, they will accommodate as required by law. So the city will accommodate these needs, and, you know, I wish the department had been a little more clear on stating this, but we are obligated to address issues, and if the customer has health issues, we are obligated by law to do that. So I, I won't be supporting the motion that's in front of us, I, I mean, because we're going to be doing it anyways. So I think we should all be aware of that, and, and, you know, maybe tune up the department for not writing that into the report. But anyways, that's where I stand on this.
Thank you. Counsel Chambers?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just, you know, hearing the clarification that the department is, is required to accommodate those individuals that have the sensitivity, the electronic sensitivity. I mean, we are all, as humans, we have electrical impulses that course through our body. It's understandable that some people will have a hypersensitivity towards this type of technology, but if there is a clause within, you know, city of Winnipeg that says that we must accommodate those with medical issues regardless, and I mean, we are installing these water meters to have better accuracy in reporting, you know, making it mandatory is, is, you know, if we're doing that, we have to consider those that have that sensitivity that impacts their lives. If the city of Winnipeg is saying that we have to do it, then I'm satisfied with that. If it's done on an individual basis, and to Counsel Orliko's estimations of, you know, point zero, 0.1%, approximately 500 homes, I think that would be manageable for the department to interact with those individuals as they are transitioning to this new technology, to make sure that those individuals are not negatively impacted by the technology that the city of Winnipeg is putting forward. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Okay, Counsel Eadie, would you like to close?
Yes, Madam Speaker. I'm gonna give, Madam Speaker, the hard evidence that council itself should by policy statement, as is in the amendment, that there should be an accommodation for those with certification and medical, and that there are means like directing the transmission away for those who don't have proof, or installing outside, make it more directional, there's a number of things that could be done with the technology, Madam Speaker, and whatever technology we come, there's a database, a software collected, so people can, can call in their readings. However, in Canadian and human rights law, in this city of Winnipeg, Manitoba, Canada, this totally blind person had to fight for 27 years to have an audible signal at every intersection, Madam Speaker, because there was no policy set by council that said, we must do that, until we got the votes, and then even after we got the votes, we still had to mediate, negotiate through the Manitoba Human Rights Commission to have our rights accommodation met, Madam Speaker. Manitoba Human Rights Commission to have our rights accommodation met, Madam Speaker. So, just to say, well, by law, we have to do that, you know, what you're going to do is, we should make it very specific that the people who don't have the certification through medical will have to utilize one of these other methods that can be used to reduce any exposure to the transmission waves. So, let's be very clear about that. And there's a cost. There's a cost, Madam Speaker, to the city to fight this stuff against people with disabilities. And make no mistake, there will be. A thing about persons with disabilities you need to know, Madam Speaker, is that we are tenacious and will whack our heads against the wall until our rights are met. I want to avoid that. It's a simple amendment to use the excuse that, oh, while the department says that they have to do it, we need to make it very clear in policy, which is what this does. It's as simple as that. So, people, vote as you might, but I'm going to tell you, through real-life experience, the department just saying that makes it sound simple. We had to fight for the walk-up service, Madam Speaker. Never mind. There was a fight for that. A fight for that. Somebody's quadrupled, had to fight to get a walk-up service to collect their garbage. Now, the thing is, they're being served by somebody, so there's an employee there that could probably take it out. However, you know, there's a whole, a whole bunch of dynamics that, you know, are, we, the city, need to make it clear, the city council, along with our department. I'm not saying that the department are demons, Madam Speaker. The head of water waste is sincere in wanting to accommodate, but filing a complaint, Manitoba Human Rights Commission, it costs the city money. We have, I think, somebody that deals with human rights. There's the subcommittee of the Human Rights Committee. Anyway, I'll just leave it at that. It's not a simple thing to say, well, the department has to do it. The solid waste had to provide walk-up service. You know how hard, it was a fight. I was chair of the access, you were on the access advisory committee, Madam Speaker, when that whole thing was going down. So, like, I'll leave it at that. It's just a simple amendment. Acknowledge that. It sets policy from council for the department, and I think it's reasonable, a compromise, because there are those out there who say they're sensitive to the waves, that also say that they want the analog meter. Well, that's not happening, right? The smart, the digital meter reading is going to happen. It has to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll call the question on this vote. All in favor of amending motion four, please rise.
Counselors Dobson, Eadie, Gilroy, Mays, Orliko, Rollins, Santos, Wyatt, and Madam Speaker, Counselor Sharma.
Those opposed, please rise.
His worship, Mayor Gillingham. Counselors Lard, Brawdy, Chambers, Duncan, Luke.
The vote, Madam Speaker, yays nine, nays six.
Amending motion four passes and the main item as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All in favor, please rise.
His worship, Mayor Gillingham. Counselors Lard, Brawdy, Chambers, Dobson, Eadie, Gilroy, Luke, Mays, Orliko, Rollins, Santos, and Madam Speaker, Counselor Sharma.
Those opposed, please rise.
Counselors Duncan and Wyatt.
The vote, Madam Speaker, yays thirteen, nays two.
Okay. Okay. Item five as amended passes. Okay. Now, we have motions under this committee. Motion number nine, that's been circulated, is moved by Counsel Eadie, seconded by Counsel Mays. It's regarding recycling at community events. It'll be an automatic referral to the standing committee. Now, bylaws under this committee? Counsel Eadie?
Oh, there is? Whoops. I should look at. Bear with me, Madam Speaker. Where are we? Oh, my goodness.
Do you move that bylaw 72 of 2025 be read a first time?
72 of 2025? I so move, Madam Speaker.
That's okay. It's all good. All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried.
Bylaw number 72 of 2025.
Counsel Eadie will move 72 of 2025 be read a second time?
I'll move it to be read a second time, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried.
Madam Speaker.
Bylaw number 72 of 2025.
Counsel Eadie?
I think it's, Madam Speaker, I move to suspend the rules and to vote a third time to have the bylaw signed and sealed. I think that's how it reads.
Very good. Thank you. That's 72 of 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried. We'll now have question period under this committee. Counsel Mays?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And thanks to Counsel Eadie for his comments the other day in the press about moving forward on the IGRS RNG, the changing of the flaring at the Brady landfill site to capturing that and putting it into the natural gas pipeline. Any further updates he could provide or anything he can do, anything we can do to expedite this initiative, because it's, we're going to make money, private sector's going to make money, and it's good for the environment. So, anything, anything we as a council can do to expedite this? Or are we aware when the vote is coming for the deal with IGRS so we can get this thing into the ground and get it moving?
Madam Speaker, I'm not sure of the full details, but it's my understanding that the earliest we would hear, vote on a contract at some point before the end of the year. Might take longer. And, Madam Speaker, what, well, this is a council decision and past chairs in this city has for a number of years. It's too bad it got delayed. But apparently, once we vote on it, it'll stake, still take about two years in order for the system to be up and working and generating revenue.
Thank you. No further questions? Nothing more under this committee? Okay. Thank you. The next committee is the Standing Policy and Community Services. I'd like our deputy speaker to please come take the chair.
All right. So, Counsel Santos?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Speaker. I move, I introduce the report and move adoption of the consented items number one to four for the Standing Policy Committee on Community Services dated July 2, 2025.
All right. Anybody want to pull anything out? See, none. Moving on. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, my friend. See what you lose. All in favor then? Ayes?
Aye.
Nays? None? So moved. Now, I guess we're moving on to question period?
Nope.
Nope? Oh, what I got? I need help. Oh, the big yellow thing here you put in front of me. Right. Okay. We have now, we're going to move on to the notice of motions. The clerk, blah, blah, blah. This is your bylaw. First up, we have the notice of motion by Counsel Chambers and second by Counsel Mays, which I understand you would like to withdraw. Oh, look at this. Your motion, in occurrence of second, to Counsel Mays.
Yes. Mr. Deputy Speaker, I'd like to rescind the motion, or, sorry, withdraw the motion with the support of the second, or found another way to support this cause.
Good job. Thank you very much. All, do we have a vote on that? All in support? Opposed? None? Carried. Hey, we're good. Stop asking so many questions. The following, what? Keep going? This yellow again? Oh, now we have the motion, it was the notice of motion for number two, library naming Mike O'Shaughnessy Library. Counsel Sharma.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Speaker. It's truly an honor to rise today in support of the motion before us to name the new library in northwest Winnipeg, soon to be located in the Garden City Shopping Center, the Mike O'Shaughnessy Library. Since taking office nearly 15 years ago, not once has Mike, nor any member of his family, ever sought recognition, Mr. Deputy Speaker, for his many years of dedicated public service. That in itself speaks volumes about, that in itself speaks volumes about the character of the man. Yet, over the years, I've been approached by many members of the community, people who remember Mike's leadership, his wisdom, and his contributions. They have expressed a desire to see him honored in some meaningful way to honor his legacy. Ideas were shared over the years, but nothing ever seemed to be quite the right fit. This, I believe, is the right fit. Libraries are places of lifelong learning, of connection, of public good, values that Mike upheld throughout his career. Mike has always been an avid reader, a passion he has passed down to his daughter, Nyri, and one that has shaped his quiet but powerful appreciation for his knowledge, literacy, and community. I remember sitting in Mike's living room, sharing the idea of naming the library in his honor just a few months ago. His immediate response wasn't about himself, it was about the young people. Will, will there be a place for students to study? He asked me. Will they have good access to books? This will be marvelous for them, he said. He spoke at length about the importance of libraries, their role in fostering connection, and how vital they are to community life. The conversation we had reaffirmed for me that this naming, this tribute, was exactly right. That humility, that focus on others, that's who Mike O'Shaughnessy was and is today. Mike O'Shaughnessy served on Winnipeg City Council for 31 years, first from 1974 to 1980, and then again from 1986 to 2010. He represented the, represented the Caldonin Park, Jefferson, and Old Caldonin wards. He served under six different mayors, sat on 48 committees, including 14 years on the Executive Policy Committee, and spent eight years as the Speaker of Council. He was respected by colleagues and constituents alike, not only for his experience, but for his fairness, humility, and sense of duty. I'm proud to move this motion to recognize someone who has given so much of his time, his energy, and his heart to our city. Naming a public library in his honor is not just appropriate, it is deeply meaningful. I'd like to thank the mayor for joining me in leading this motion, and to Counselors Brawdy, Wyatt, and Orliko for their enthusiastic support when I shared the idea with each of them. They all fondly remember their time serving with Mike on council. Finally, thank you to city clerks for your assistance, particularly our city clerk, Mr. Carlos Camaro. During this process, he worked with our Archives Department, helping to retrieve the historical record of our city's longest-serving city councillor. I thank you. I ask you all for your support today.
Thank you very much. Any further comments? Mr. Brawdy? Counsel Brawdy?
Just very briefly, it's certainly my honor, honor to support this, the motion. I'd like to thank Speaker Sharma for suggesting it. Mike was a longtime servant here in this council for 30 years. When I started on city council back in 2006, there were a number of counselors who had been here a very long time, people like Bill Clement, people, Harry Lazarenko, even Lilian Thompson had been here over 20 years when I started on council. I was the cub councillor at the time, and I really appreciate some of those folks for taking me under their wing. I was inexperienced and had a lot of questions, and I appreciated the wisdom and the time that was spent by folks like Harry Lazarenko and Bill Clement and Mike O'Shaughnessy in this case. Mike was completely no-nonsense. He was straight to the point. He didn't candy coat things. This is how things were. In one of the last pieces that was written in the Winnipeg Free Press back in September of 2010 by a Free Press reporter who was here today on behalf of the CBC, Mr. Kivas, the story ended, "Council was my least favorite of all my meetings," he said, referring to Counselor O'Shaughnessy, dismissing it as theater. When I spoke on things on occasion, it was quite often since I heard so much BS from other people. I wanted to make sure something was on the record that was factual." Very telling of the way Mike O'Shaughnessy spoke and conducted his dealings here on council. So, I love libraries. I love the idea of this library in a community center, in a community regional mall where there's great transportation access, there's great parking. It makes a lot of sense to me, so I'm very happy to support this motion today. Thank you.
Counsel Eadie? Go ahead, sir.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Deputy Speaker. I rise, actually, to support the naming of this new library for Old Caldonin after, I believe, Counselor O'Shaughnessy had three more years than Harry Lazarenko. I think it's 36 years he served, if I recall correctly. They were both first elected when the city, unicity, came into being, and Harry only had three years less because he stepped on a run against mayor one year and he lost to, anyway, he lost, lost to the incumbent mayor. And really, I just wanted to say, even though I ran against Mike O'Shaughnessy in 1998 and 2006, not really knowing what, you know, like, I had a good idea, but knowing the work, the stress that it takes to be a city councillor, I think this is very appropriate for Mike to have a library named after him. So, thank you, Counselor Sharma.
Seeing Counsel Mays? Go ahead.
A couple of quick words in French, if I may, just to alert the translator. Je voudrais remercier conseiller Sharma pour cette idée. C'était important de faire de reconnaissance des conseillers. Nous avons nommé la bibliothèque Sergeant Park pour conseiller Harvey Smith. Et il y a des autres exemples dans la ville de Winnipeg. C'est important pour la communauté du nord-ouest de la ville de Winnipeg. Bonne idée. Merci conseiller Sharma. Thank you.
Further comments? See none? Call the vote. All in support? Oh, sorry, you want to close?
This is my chance. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Speaker. I want to thank my colleagues for their memories, as well as their thoughtful and supportive comments today and all, and just online and offline in general with me. Your support reflects the deep respect that so many of us share for Mike O'Shaughnessy. This naming, it's more than a gesture, it's a lasting tribute to someone who led with humility, served with dedication, and believed in the power of community. And I look forward to seeing future generations walk through the doors of the Mike O'Shaughnessy Library, a place of learning, connection, and inspiration. Thank you to you all. I ask for your support.
On that note, all in support? Opposed? None? Carried. Moving on now, we have a motion number five from Counsel Gilroy and Rollins regarding encampments. This will be an automatic referral to the SBC on Community Services. Okay? Now, we're moving on. There are no bylaws under this committee, so we'll move on to question period. Any questions for Counsel Santos? Too late? See none? Oh, I don't know. You're a little late, but okay. Go ahead, Counsel Rollins.
It was such a milestone this month. I was hoping the chair could talk about GCWCC. It was such a milestone, it's a moment to celebrate. I hope that she could talk a few words about that.
Is there a question? Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Counsel Santos.
Sure. Just kind of want to reiterate the good work, the Department of Public Service, as well as Laura Messman from GCWCC, in working in collaboration with the many volunteers that volunteer at the sixty-three community centers, to come up and develop a forward-looking plan that we see recently passed through EPCN, today's council, the General Council of Winnipeg Community Centers Plan Twenty Forty-five. So, I appreciate the question, I think there's lots of work that still needs to be done, and lots of further dialogue and consultation with the community, that this work is not done. We have some report back to EPC in the near future, and some further alignment with budgetary asks, but yes, it's, it's been a long time coming, we're going to see some good movement with governance, with some, also, support to doing some wage subsidies, as well as hiring some external legal counsel to support community centers, to deal with management agreements. The conversation's not going to stop, and I do look forward to continue on that dialogue with EPC councillors and GCWCC. So, thanks for the question.
Any further questions? Seeing none? Want me to carry on? Speaker's going to make me carry on. All right, so now we'll move on to Public Works, SBC on Public Works, councillor Luke's.
Yes, I'd like to move items one, two, three, and pull item four.
So, okay, item, anybody else? One you want to pull, is there Wellington Crescent?
Yeah.
And there's a mending motion. Okay, any thing else on, okay, on items one to two, three? All in support? Opposed? None? Carried? Move on to number, item number four, go ahead.
Item four, Wellington Crescent, Academy Road to Stradbroke Avenue Bike Lane Pilot Project, formerly speed limit reduction on Wellington Crescent.
Okay. Yeah, sorry, councillor Luke, want to introduce, please?
Sure. So, there's been a lot of discussion on this report by many different groups, and many different representatives that we've heard. I want to thank all the representatives for coming down and giving their perspectives in many unique ways. What I would like to say about this report, I, I've been a very, very, very longtime advocate since basically two thousand and four is when I started on advocating for active transportation, and I know the passion, I understand the passion, so much so that I did decide to put my name on the ballot and come on, I call it the dark side, but try and move mountains on the other side of the table. What I want to say about Wellington Crescent and the reason to gather public input, what I've seen in my time over the years involved with active transportation, and I think I can say this with some level of credibility, is the Public Works does their best to present a plan. The world of active transportation engineering has been evolving and evolving and evolving. It's a new realm of engineering that Winnipeg is, is using and applying, actually worldwide, it's been evolving for, you know, I'd say over the last twenty years. What I've seen over my time related to active transportation projects is, we don't always get it right. The Public Works Department doesn't always get it right. What I find really works and helps is to take that public input and that public consultation to get it right. And this is what we're doing with this project, or this is what's being presented, is taking that time to gather the information from the public, from people that are on the street, that, that reside on the street, reside in the apartment blocks, to, to get that input. While we say this is a temporary installation, when you say temporary, you think of, you know, maybe a year or two. It's, the term temporary, and maybe we should have said this and elaborated more in the report, this term temporary, this will prob, whatever is put in will probably be here five to seven years. The permanent infrastructure will go in when there's road reconstruction, or a much more significant budget that's found to do a permanent, to do permanent infrastructure. So, in addition, this road handles, I believe it's eight thousand plus vehicles a day, it's a major artery. So, there's a lot of considerations that need to be put into this plan. The Public Service has come up with a plan, and, and while it looks great, I really feel we need to also hear from the public. So, this is, this is the, this is what's in front of you today. The Public Service says they'll be able to come back in February, present what the final plan will be for the temporary, five to seven years, probably, the temporary infrastructure, and then we can proceed in the spring. I know this, well, we all know this doesn't please everyone, but I, I have seen over my time here, if we don't do it right, it's a domino effect and other things can happen. And I think we really need, this is, this is one of our premier corridors, it's a beautiful corridor, you know, if I look at, oh, I'm trying to, I think it's Banatine, is it Banatine? One of the streets that we've recently signed, and signed, and it's, it's horrible, it's a nightmare. It's a bike lane with forty or fifty signs on it. We don't want to see that on Wellington. We want to design something that keeps, with the beauty of the neighborhood, with the, with the, you know, the, the real beauty of the neighborhood, we want to ensure that the design of the infrastructure that goes in is going to work on a major corridor. I'm supportive of lowering the speed, I think I've made that clear, I put forward a motion, it got shot down. I'm supportive of changing the speed. So, I, I really, I really think we need the time for the Public Service to gather input, to work on the design, and put in something that's going to work and not have a domino effect. So, that is why we're here today, voting on what is in front of us, is we're, we're not putting it in this year, we're asking for more time to do a really good, comprehensive consultation, and modify if need be the design. And, and I'm, I'm okay with that, you know, I'm okay with that. So, I'm asking that you support this.
Thank you very much. Now, I believe the mending motion? Councillor Rollins?
Thank you. I, I want to thank the, the group's representatives and the committee for their deliberations. I've been fairly active putting forward things at Public Works. The motion, the amending motion is, is really embedded in the public, the, the Public Service Report. In, within the report, they have a discussion saying that they could also start as per the council direction right away. And that's what many of the delegations have pointed to, whether they came to Public Works EPC or here, that, that this could start right away. And I, I feel somewhat, you know, like Solomon in considering, well, why not do both then? Why not extend it to full? Right? And instead of, instead of just consulting, you know, let's, let's look at that. But instead, I've come to recommend here to council a motion that merely looks at recommendation three, and deletes the words, and seek final approval for the installation of the updated design. Why? Because in the end, I will acknowledge that while I would have preferred a thirty-kilometer speed limit, the committee looked at forty kilometers. I do think that this does deviate from normative pilot practices, which really involve temporary infrastructure first, followed by an evaluation based on observed conditions and user experience. That's why I ran out of our hearing at Community Committee and went to speak to Public Works to say, hey, this isn't what we normally do, or what people normally understand as a normative pilot project, where we, you know, like we did on Assiniboine, and the chair will recall us putting that structure in, that we installed that infrastructure first, followed by evaluation based on the observed conditions, the user experience with it. Doing that without isolation begs a few more questions, and that's why I also put in a notice of motion on adopted road safety policies that prioritize action and implement to reduce injuries, like we have in our, in our road safety action plan that adopts Vision Zero. You know, to, to conclude this, the opening remarks, I, you know, I, I, I really do want to thank each and every group that came and representative that came, including my ward residents and those of, of Deputy Speaker Orliko's, who also experienced the difficulties in leaving their driveway, leaving their condo property in rush hour or other times, because the road on Wellington is fifty kilometers that aren't necessarily adhered to. So, there's a few stakeholders, not just the cycling community, that is interested in this motion, and interested in getting speeds lowered on Wellington so they could just leave their driveway. So, with that, I'll, I'll open the amending motion discussion.
Thank you very much. On the main motion, the mending motion, any comments? There, yeah, there. Seeing none, yes, I am seeing some. Okay, councillor Brawdy? And then councillor, and then Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, or Mr. Speaker, Mr. Deputy Speaker. I'll get this right yet. Guy in the chair over there. Contrary to popular belief, I actually do support a coherent, connected active transportation network. I honestly do believe that this is actually the right street to put active transportation down, and it is an important connecting piece to get between Osborn Village and Sherbrooke, Maryland, to get from Sherbrooke, Maryland to Assiniboine Park. This is a piece of legitimate active transportation infrastructure that makes sense. It makes more sense than putting it on Academy, more sense than putting it on Corden, this is where it kind of has to go. But the point is, this is somebody's neighborhood, we have people that live there, we have other people that use the neighborhood, people who drive through the neighborhood. There's all sorts of stakeholders, in addition to cyclists, that need to have a say here. So, even though we're talking about a temporary solution at the moment, and the, the solution isn't exactly free, it's still a four-thousand-dollar temporary piece of temporary infrastructure. So, we want to get it right. We want the neighbors and the people who live in the neighborhood to appreciate it, we want people who drive through the neighborhood today, and will continue to connect, use it as a major thoroughfare, to be recognized and supported. And cyclists, we want to make sure that we're not, you know, redoing it several times over, and perhaps ticking off other people by not giving it to them. So, again, I do support this process, and I think it's important we do it this way. I also feel it's important that we consult on the speed limit. Yes, the cycling community has suggested the speed limit go down, to forty or thirty, but our drivers that go through the area should be consulted too. Yes, a lot of the time, there's enough traffic, enough stuff going on, you have to slow down. The speed limit is the speed limit under ideal conditions, we need to remember that. When there's kids playing by the street, when there's parked cars that, you know, reduce visibility, you have to slow the heck down. It's been a while since I was in driver's education, but I remember that what was said back then was like, again, it's only under, under the most ideal of circumstances. So, even though the default speed limit is fifty, if you're going around a corner and it's icy, slow down. If there's kids playing adjacent to the street, slow the heck down. And when there's cyclists on the street, slow down. So, I don't support lowering the speed limit at all from fifty. Was the average speed under fifty? Probably is today. But under ideal conditions, when you've got a good thorough, you've got good visibility, you've got good conditions, fifty, add, you know, rounding up even maybe to fifty-five, you know, we know people often go up to ten percent above the posted engineered speed limit, I don't think it's a problem. So, again, hundred-and-fifty kilometers plus, obviously, you know, I, I feel terrible for the family of Rob Jenner, I just want to put that on the record as well, and extend my condolences to his family, friends, and loved ones, colleagues. Terrible. And I also remember back when I started driving, I was warned and scared to death, well, not, not to death, scared thoroughly about how much a car is a weapon. When you're in a car, you have that huge mass of weight behind you compared to a pedestrian, compared to a cyclist. I was very much scared about it, you need to pay attention when you're driving, you need to keep your eyes on the road, not distracted by the radio. These were days before cell phones, but it was, it was, it made very strongly to me that, you know, you have to be present when you're driving. Going a hundred-and-fifty kilometers an hour down the street, I hope that person is locked up for a long period of time, and I hope that person never gets to drive again. That's, that's absolutely unacceptable. Doesn't bring Rob Jenner back, but I think it makes a point that driving is a privilege, and it's unacceptable to, to be that ignorant and dangerous on our roads. So, again, I will be supporting the original motion, I will not be supporting the amendment, and I do want to make sure that this is done properly, and I am supportive of this particular piece of bike infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Speaker. I too will be supporting the main item, I won't be supporting the amendment. Similar to what councillor Brawdy just said, and what councillor Luke said, I think it's important to allow the consultation to happen, and to ultimately hear back from the area residents as well. The last thing we would want is to put something in and rip it out. You know, the goal would be to do this in such a way that ultimately, whatever is there is a permanent investment. I, I want to take a moment as well, just to, because there's been so much talk over the series of meetings, Public Works meetings, the series of delegations, a lot of talk in the media about this as a matter, I want to take a moment just to acknowledge the work of councillor Janice Luke's, not just as a city councillor and the chair of Public Works, but in fact, frankly, for the last twenty years on this, I don't know that there's been a stronger advocate for the cycling community than councillor Janice Luke's. Twenty years ago, when she started her work to advocate for active transportation pathways, if I get this right, I think the city's budget for AT was about a hundred thousand dollars a year. If you look at the twenty-twenty-five operating budget, under page one-fourteen, active transportation this year, nineteen-point-one million. If you take a look at our capital page, I think it's page three-seventeen in the capital book, eight-point-three million dollars in investment in active transportation. Yes, a lot of councillors here over the years have advocated for that and supported it, but I'll just say it, councillor Luke's has been driving this and been a key proponent and advocate for the investment in active transportation investment, and I want to acknowledge that and thank her for it. I say that in part because, you know, I, it was enough of the meetings to hear some of the delegates assert somehow that councillors, including councillor Luke's, in essence, my words, not theirs, but didn't care, weren't paying attention, you know, cycling didn't matter to them. Well, you know, I think the councillor's record speaks for itself, we're here today voting on yet what will be another important investment in active transportation infrastructure, but I'm glad to support the original motion, and I want to thank all councillors, especially councillor Luke's, for her leadership on this.
Councillor Gilroy, and then I have councillor Wyatt, and now I have councillor Mace.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I support this motion. I think we make things sometimes a little too complicated. I think we all agree this is the right place for an active transportation route. I think we have many other active transportation routes that we can look at today that could help settle this. I, I, I do think that this is a good spot for it, and quite frankly, I'm also, also just a little note, my community does not really want bikes going through their park, which is Omens Creek, and it's the bridge we're dealing with. This would solve a lot of my community's issues as well, because this would allow the bike riders to stay on the road that they kind of are wanting to be on. So, I, I, I think we've done a lot of these, Woolsey's a prime example, and I really don't think we have to make huge, huge changes to some of the, the streets. I do really want to encourage us to get that report out, out on road, on, on our, how slow our streets, I forget what we're talking about, but the, the report on the slowing down of, of kilometers, that's really critical because we're all hearing it, and so we could be just changing this by just slowing the speeds down on our street. So, I, I do support this, I think we've got lots of other streets that we have to look at that's been a success. I think we've got lots of other streets that we have to look at that's been a success, and there is room on that street to, to allow both cars and cycling. So I don't see why we should be waiting any further. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Counselor Wyatt?
I, I guess I'll rise to just ask a question that maybe Council Luke's going to refer to. It's under the recommendation, maybe you already spoke to it and I missed it, was 2024 Active Transportation Studies Project Number 1832300224. Could you speak to that and just explain what that might mean? Because it doesn't seem to be spoken about in the report at all.
She'll choose to respond to that at the appropriate time. He's referring to item number one, the project number 1832300224, the funding source. Okay, moving on, I have now Counselor Mace.
Thank you. I, I won't be supporting the amendment somewhat reluctantly because I continue to have the position I've had for some months, if not years now here, which is we need the overall report, and those of us who've had extremely high-speed accidents in our wards, and we're told to wait for the process, wait for the process, wait for the report, I'm prepared to do that if we're taking all of these in the same equal fashion, if we're just going to keep dropping in different projects in different areas, and I appreciate there's a fatal accident here, there certainly could have been, and that is a tragedy, but there's certainly could have been a fatal accident in my ward when the car went flying through the air in Victoria Crescent and wrapped itself around a tree at something like 200 kilometers an hour. So luckily, there wasn't a fatality, but I just continue to feel that we need that overall report. Counselor Gilroy just mentioned it, and on that, I certainly agree with her, so we can get going on some of these projects in a coherent fashion, because we have spent an immense amount of time on some of these one-off things, and frankly, it's just not fair to people in other wards. So with reluctance, I won't be supporting the amendment, but I do, you know, support the overall direction here, but we have been waiting for that speed limit report for months, if not years, and we need to get that, and we need to get that debated so we can have something to say to everyone else in the city.
Thank you very much. Any more speakers? Nope, not seen any? No, still not seen any? No? Okay. Counselor Duncan?
Thank you, reluctant Mr. Deputy Speaker. I did not support the extension of time at the Executive Policy Committee, and I won't be supporting the amendment, and I will not be supporting the motion without the amendment today. And the reasons for that are because, first off, the belligerent approach of the delegates as we went through the process was not helpful to the cause of biking in Winnipeg in general. I questioned one of the delegates of representing all bikers in Winnipeg, and if he thought that was a good approach, and another belligerent answer was given that really lent no favors. It's unfortunate because you have lobby groups such as Bike Winnipeg that do such a wonderful job advocating for bike infrastructure and bikers in general in Winnipeg. But really, what it comes down to here, whether people are polite, or rude, or good at lobbying, or not good at lobbying, or, you know, educated or not educated on the topics they come to speak to, it's, it's a decision of do we get this done, or do we not get this done? And I don't think we've exhausted all those options. I think that if we very carefully looked at the local and regional street renewal plan for potentially the Fort Gary, East Fort, sorry, the Fort Rouge, East Fort Gary Ward, and seeing potentially, maybe we could reallocate some of those existing dollars towards a project next year that would accomplish the same goal. You know, that would upset another community, but that being drivers that want to see roads being done, but there are definitely feelings around this table that this should be prioritized above all else. Surprisingly enough, the folks out in Charleswood Tuxedo primarily, not so much Westwood, I'm not saying that nobody comes all the way from Westwood to use this route, but they quite enjoy this route as well, and I've been lobbied by some of them to complete this, and I hear them. But at the end of the day, there's a plan in place, the study has to be done. This, to my knowledge, is the first regional street that would have a pilot project. Perhaps the Chair could clarify that. I'll ask the question in question period, but I think it's important that if we're serious about getting this done, and it's a serious safety risk, and I'll put this on the record, you know, Ms. Van Loon lost Mr. Jenner, and it's incredibly unfortunate, devastating. Life will never be the same for anybody involved in that. However, for the group to then go politicize it and say that, you know, it could have been changed for this, that, or the other, the individual was driving 130 kilometers an hour with no care for anybody on the road, whether they're on the bike, whether they're using their, you know, feet to walk or driving a car. That is a terrible circumstance that could not be corrected by this infrastructure. We need to decide whether this is exceptionally important, and we can decide that by considering reallocating existing funds to get this done sooner rather than later. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Speaker.
Else? Seen none? To close, Counselor Luke's? Wait. Oh, no, sorry, amending motion first. Counselor Rollins?
Thank you. So my goal is to protect cyclists and pedestrians, and, and, and I, I think this is the third or fourth motion to this end that I've done with help from others, and, and thank you for that. I appreciate the words of the mayor for Janice Luke's and the AT budget, and I also appreciate that the Chair is also one of the few people that, like me, ran on Vision Zero to eliminate fatalities and has worked consistently under, you know, even, even though we might differ on a few things, has worked consistently towards that end. It was really nice to hear from Counselor Broady, Mr. Speaker, with respect to how appropriate Wellington is for active transit. But my goal is to protect cyclists and pedestrians to that end, you know, as the local councillor who is concerned with multiple schools and daycares in the area, having seen, you know, the hole in the fence of St. Mary's over and over again, or crashed through on Sherris Etic over and over again, where there's now daycare playground, it's really important to see the reduction of speeds here. And it's also important to note, in the words of the administration, that they do write that the proposed infrastructure could be implemented in 2025. They write that they would modify the plan more closely to resemble a typical pilot and collect feedback from both road users and fronting residents after they've had an opportunity to experience the change. It's important that, that in, back in the spring, people were told it could be built and built quickly, and, and that it is, and that in the words of the report, it's important to note this four-phased approach is atypical of a traditional pilot, and that there, there was an acknowledgement within the report that, that if they move to implement in 2025, the public service would modify the plan more closely to resemble a typical pilot collecting that feedback. And that is, is really the subject of the, the amending motion, and I, I would call a recorded vote on the amending motion. I do think that it is, it is fair that the city is committed to gathering the feedback. I think it is important to note that our active transportation file and the budget associated with it. But, like I said, my aim has been a project that aims to create a safer environment for cyclists and pedestrians, including those that came in delegation, and I want to pay specific thanks to those little children like Libby from the St. Boniface Ward, I believe, who came in delegation to the Standing Policy Committee on Public Works. I believe I have offered to run her next campaign when she is of age. So thank you very much. In closing, I hope that there's a good amount of folks that want to really consider Recommendation Three and seek final approval for the installation of updated design. Indeed, it is what community was told could be done. It's what is reflected in the report that could be done. It is more typical of a pilot that would protect pedestrians and cyclists. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and to close, Counselor Luke's?
No, I think we've said enough on this report.
First vote is on the amending motion. All in support. The recorded vote is being requested. All report, please rise.
Counselors Gilroy and Rollins.
No?
Opposed.
Well, yeah, no.
Call for the opposed.
Oh, sorry, you're asking me to. It's weird. All opposed? Please rise.
His worship, Mayor Gillingham. Counselors Alard, Broady, Chambers, Dobson, Duncan, Edie, Luke's, Mace, Santos, Wyatt, Madam Speaker, Counselor Sharma.
Thank you. And that, so the motion is, now I say it, right? I'm opposed. Opposed, right? So it's two...
Counselor Orlicos opposed.
Yes. Okay.
The vote, Mr. Deputy Speaker, ayes two, nays 13.
All right, so on the main motion? Oh, sorry, the amending motion, but not that.
Yep. Correct. Lost.
So the amending motion fails. Moving on to the main motion. All in support?
Aye. Vote?
Yes, your microphone's not on for the speaker.
A little late for that, but okay. Yeah, we already called the question. So again, the recorded vote called, but please try to make sure we do that before we call the vote, not after, just because you can use it politically. So recorded vote has been called, all, all under that. All in support of the motion, the main motion?
His worship, Mayor Gillingham. Counselors Alard, Broady, Chambers, Dobson, Edie, Gilroy, Luke's, Mace, Rollins, Santos, Wyatt, Madam Speaker, Counselor Sharma, and Mr. Deputy Speaker, Counselor Orlicos.
Thank you. All opposed?
Counselors Duncan.
The vote, Mr. Deputy Speaker, ayes 14, nays 1.
Thank you all. So the motion as, as original was presented is passed. Moving on now, I think that's it for this part. Now we're moving, we have, let me just look at my little notes here. We have, we have motion six from Counsel Gilroy and Orlicos regarding speed zones in schools, I mean, speeding in school zone. We don't, we're doing the amending motion first or question period first?
Yeah.
Yeah, so for speeding in school zones, this will be automatic referral to SBC of Public Works.
We also have motion 11.
And we also have number 11, automatic referral regarding the safety pilot projects, we'll call it, right?
Yep.
Yep. And then we, and that's number six. Okay, that's it for those two. Bye-bye. Okay, now we have question period. There's no bylaws, so we'll move on. It's a question period for Counselor Luke's. Anyone? Anyone? Counselor Duncan. Counselor Rollins next. Counselor Duncan, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Speaker. Question for the Chair. Is it possible to reallocate local and regional street dollars towards protected bike lane infrastructure?
It is possible, but to my understanding, it requires council's support. I believe it's two-thirds of council that has to support reallocation of street project to active transportation.
Second question?
Thank you. Would the Chair be willing to visit some of the current local and regional street projects in the Fort Rouge, East Fort Gary Ward, to see if those could be allocated towards this protected bicycle path on Wellington, as discussed?
Sure, we could look at that. You know, kind of to Counselor Mace's point, the Public Works Department lays out priorities, and sometimes other things percolate up, such as we're seeing here today. I mean, it is a priority, but yeah, that's, that's absolutely doable, and we, we could look at that, and it would have to come forward for a council vote.
Then I have Counselor Wyatt and Counselor Mace, and...
I'm, is it, is it me? Okay, yeah. I'm wondering if the Chair could provide an update on transit. The, you know, I've been also at Public Works doing motions with respect to consultation, namely, large institutions, whether academic or hospitals or clinics, that were not consulted in advance of major changes in the bus route. But what, what concerns me, and what I, I'm hoping she has an update, is that council was told that we will be getting a guide that would facilitate then questions for our ward residents, and that that guide wouldn't be coming. I believe the date is July 26th. In the meantime, we are getting another form of communication from the department, which on the, which is a roll-up of a primary transit network, and frankly, the roll-up of, that we're getting does not match buses that, that our residents are telling us have been completely missed, perhaps like three in a succession. They don't match them, and I'm, I'm wondering if the, the Chair could outline what that tool is intended for, if it's supposed to reflect the real-time information on the transit network, i.e. buses that are missed.
Okay, I'm not quite sure about what you're meaning about the roll-up, but, so we have a frequently asked questions on the website that the public service has posted. Now that we've launched the network, there's more questions that come in, that have come in, that the public service is going to be either adding on to the, they'll add it on to the FAQs, and then they'll also send us an email on that. With, the timing couldn't have been any worse, that the, the GPS wasn't working on some of the units, so that caused, caused inaccurate information or no information going out regarding times and connections. They're working through that. To my understanding, it's almost been fixed, so that, that is causing confusion with connections and timing and schedules on the, on the, on the reader boards. Also, another thing that is impacting, and I think we all knew this because we, we have talked about it, is construction. Construction is impacting arrival times and departure times and connection times. Where I think we're into week three of this, maybe week four, it feels like week 100, but it's, we're getting a lot of feedback, that's good. I know Transit is wanting to talk with us after our probe is over, and just give us an update so we know where we're at and what's happening. Of course, then it'll be the fall schedule. But for sure, what I experienced in 2020 when we changed all the routes in the southwest quadrant was basically all of the things that we're experiencing now, and there were changes, there were tweaks, and I've said this publicly, we won't be changing the transfer concept. We're still going to be having the spine infusers, but there probably will be changes to bus stop locations, some, I would expect. And, and until you roll out a system like this, we all knew there'd be some glitches, Transit knew there'd be some glitches, and we just have to work through them. The only way we can work through them is if people report and send in their concerns, whether it be to their councillor, who then forwards it on to Transit, or directly to the form online. I don't know if I've answered your question there, because I'm not sure what the roll-up is, but...
The, the, sorry, to clarify, and I could have clarified really quickly, it's, it's called a situation report. The situation report is called the Weekly PTN Council Situation Report, and what I'm saying is that it, it carries details, and I'm just providing this by background. Mr. Speaker, I'll get to the question, but because the Chair said she didn't know what I meant, I wanted to make sure she did, which is fair. So when, when I or other councillors, notwithstanding the GPS failures, are getting overcrowding at 6:00 a.m. in the morning, or buses that are not coming at all, right, three buses, you know...
Counselor Rollins, we do need a question. There's not, if you have that offline with it, it's fine, but this is question time.
No, and that the council's situation... No, and that the council situation report doesn't reflect those facts. What is the point of this tool? Is it to reflect the fact that we know on the ground? And is there any, like, does the Chair know if the intention of Transit is to go back to these weeks on the council situation report, which is weekly, and fill them back in? Or how do I look at this council situation report? Because it does not reflect some of the gaps that happened in that week.
Counsel Luke's?
Sure. I'll have to speak to Bjorn Rasmund to really get you accurate answers on that because everything is evolving, right? It's very evolving. So I will get back to you on that. I'll commit to getting back to everyone on that.
Third question, Counsel Rollins. No preamble?
Does the Chair have an opinion and could detail what council will receive July 26, the guide that is supposed to help offices to respond to questions? In the department's preamble of what that guide is, they suggest that there's going to be a short-term and a long-term option. I'm wondering if the Chair has any insight of what we'll be receiving.
Sure. No, I don't have that insight. They haven't told me yet either. So, but obviously, it'll be more information. And I'm not sure, honestly, I really think they're still taking this information, sifting and sorting it, and figuring out what they're going to present short-term, long-term, and such. It's very evolving.
Moving on, Counsel Wyatt, and then I have Counsel Mays and Counsel Chambers.
No, I'll ask offline. Thanks.
You're good?
Yep.
All right. Loving this. Good. Counsel Mays, you're up.
I've learned this year there's something called tack oil or tack coat that goes on concrete before you adhere the blacktop to it, a certain type of road repayment work that we do. I've also learned that sometimes this goes badly, and you have an area near the street resurfacing where you're hoping to get all these votes because you've got the street resurfacing. Instead, people are very upset because the aesthetics are gone, just basically a mess extending out a couple of blocks, people, safety issues with people walking around it, people walking their dogs around it. We seem to have Mr. Berzowsky acknowledging there's a problem, which is helpful. Certain others in the department seem to think, oh, this is how it always goes. And I've been here a long time, and I've never seen road work where you have this sort of side effect of just this tarry substance spread everywhere. Could Counsel Luke's undertake to look into if we've changed the specs, or if this is all a contractor issue, or if there are other examples in the city? Because this, I'm hearing enough from people in Barrington to last me a lifetime, frankly, about this issue with whatever tack oil or tack coat may be. But something needs to be done about it so we don't have this again.
Sure. Actually, I think I can answer that. So the tack oil is, it needs a curing period. It's a new requirement in the specs that we've approved for, or well, we didn't approve it. The department changed the specs on many things. I don't know if this is asphalt. I believe it's asphalt, right?
Yep.
So there is a curing period for the tack oil. If it's not cured, depending on the weather conditions, if it's not cured, it's tacky. And you get the tire marks when the tires drive through it, and then it spreads out. So it's aesthetically not as beautiful, maybe, had it dried. So I believe it's a contractor issue. It should have had more curing time. I could find out more information on that.
Much, Counsel Mays, second question?
And very differently, I wonder if Counsel Luke's could, as part of that transit review, take a look into the whole school charter issue. Most of the complaints I've been getting, or a good number of them, have been my son or daughter, people in Royalwood living almost next door to each other, and one kid's going to Dakota and one's going to College de Sceve. So we can't make everybody happy all the time. But if there's some way, and secondly, shouldn't the schools be paying for this? Not us. I don't really think it's the city's job to get every high school taken care of for transportation needs. But if there's some thought, is there some thought toward looking at the school charter issue again?
I guess we can look at it again. All the schools were met with and discussed. They were informed that the charters wouldn't be continuing on. The Transit Lead Bjorn went to all the divisions, met with them, spoke with them. And other than, I believe, the Charleswood Division, or out Pembina Trails, but Oak Park, I think it was, and one in Counsel Orliko's ward, other than those two, the Transit Service provides service to all the schools. So, but if there's concerns, send them in, and Transit will look at them.
Done? No third? Okay, moving on then. Counsel Chambers.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, or Deputy Speaker. Through you to the Chair of Public Works. Record investments in terms of road construction this year. However, near the University of Manitoba in my ward, the stadium, there is a lot of work going on on Pembina Highway. There's work going on on the Yaw ramps. There's also work going on on Abenogee Mickinac. We also have the issue with the narrowing of the eastbound traffic on Abenogee Mickinac over the Fort Gary Bridge. With the fact that there is a bomber game tomorrow, and, you know, potentially 30,000 people descending on the, 32,649 people descending on Canada, or sorry, Princess Auto Stadium, what provisions are there to make sure that there's safety, and provisions that make sure that traffic does clear after the game?
Yeah, this is, I've been in many discussions with Mr. Miller on this. What we're doing actually for tomorrow, we've got four more articulated buses that are going on the network to move people. And the contractors are all aware of the sign placements, relocating the signs, moving the signs. It's really, it's, we've got one of the, we have the largest infill development occurring on Southwood lands, and University Crescent has to be fixed, and that's underway. That's a choke point. Abenogee, westbound, or eastbound is being fixed. The deck on Pembina Highway is being fixed. So, yeah, it's a real choke point. We've got more cyclists going, as has been noted in the numbers provided to me. Like I said, we've got articulated buses. Of all the leagues, this is probably, I think there's two leagues that are making money Mr. Miller always reminds me of, and this is one of them. And so the city is acutely aware of moving people in and out, and ensuring signs are placed in the proper placements. And it's not ideal. It'll be ideal next year, but we've got more buses coming in and out.
Second question?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Speaker. Second question to you. Again, same location. This year, the city of Winnipeg will be hosting the Gray Cup. A lot more than 32,649 people at the stadium. What provisions will be in place during the Gray Cup to ensure that there'll be minimal disruption to individuals that are attending the Gray Cup?
So at that point, University Crescent construction should be complete. The Abenogee Mickinac construction should be complete. And at that point, there will be no construction going on on the deck on Pembina Highway. So it should be good.
On to next agenda. We have, the next agenda is the SPC Committee on Finance and Economic Development. There's no report, no bylaws. So we'll move on to any questions for Counsel Brawati. Seeing none? Very good. This concludes our agenda. Counsel Brawati, we move adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None carried? Everybody have a wonderful summer. Oh, roll call, but to really do, do have a break, everybody. This job can really get us a bit, so take a break. We'll do roll call. And a group photo being asked for, for our Washington friend. So, yeah, so we'll move to do roll call. But again, everybody have a great summer. Go ahead.
Mr. Deputy Speaker, Counsel Orliko. His worship, Mayor Gillingham. Counselors Allard, Brawati, Chambers, Dobson, Duncan, Edie, Gilroy, Luke's, Mays, Rollins, Santos, Wyatt, and Madam Speaker, Counsel Sharma.